More on surrender rather than true reconciliation. When I relate these developments to the Taliban delegation, they were understandably frustrated and left in anger. By 2006, when Taliban had regained a foothold in Afghan villages in the Persian-dominated south and Qaida, Peshawar, Miram Shaashurahs were emerging, President Karzai began advocating for reconciliation. However, the US remain opposed. It wasn't until 2009 under President Obama's strategy that both President Karzai and the US aligned on the need for reconciliation, but then it was too late.
Ambassador, may I respectfully ask you to wrap up your remarks?
Okay. I will leave my comment on the regional dynamics maybe to the question and answer. I'm sure some people may ask me a question, but I will conclude with saying that that we have learned a lesson, that nothing is forever. There is no end state. Yesterday, we were proud of our Afghan-American friendship. Today, we are proud of our friendship. Who knows tomorrow? We might switch back to formal partnership to honor the sacrifices of fallen soldiers and colleagues. The lessons learned thus are critically important. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you, Ambassador Dawood Zai. Ambassador Boucher, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. Co-chairs, distinguished co-chairs, distinguished commissioners, thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you today and to talk about my experience working on Afghanistan at the State Department. I think it's more than time for all of us to think carefully about Afghanistan and the lessons we can learn. And I think it's important to remember, first and foremost in everything we do, that there has to be a very clear goal. And the goal of stabilization has to be carried out both through our, the way we fight the war and through our subsequent assistance programs. Whatever the failure of our effort, we should remember first and foremost the Americans who served honorably in Afghanistan, the Afghan patriots who fought for the future of their country, and the many Afghans who worked with us in the coalition. Many of them have been left behind in Afghanistan. At the Department of State, I was involved more or less from 2000, 2009 with Afghanistan policy, from 9/11 as spokesman and continuing as spokesman with Secretary Powell. And then with responsibility for Afghanistan and Paskestan in the Bureau of South and Central Asia with Secretary Rice from 2006 to 2009. Disclaimer, I've not been involved since then. I've had no connection with the US government, no access to classified information or reports. You know, I'm often now thinking about Sarah Palin's question, how did that work out for you last time? And I think it's a question we need to ask more and more often. Hopefully, the commission and hearings like this one will help us ask through those questions. How'd that intervention work out for you last time? In Afghanistan, first, let's say clearly, this was a war of necessity. We were attacked on 9/11 by Al Qaeda, and we had to make sure that they're, they were not able to attack us again and not remain in the sanctuary that was Afghanistan for them. The military intervention in fact succeeded quite quickly. I would say by mid to late 2002, Al Qaeda no longer had any operating base in Afghanistan. But second, the United States needed to ensure that Afghanistan would not be used again as a haven for terrorist groups. In fact, during the 1980s, the United States and our allies had contributed to the breakdown of tribal structures in and society in Afghanistan and Pakistan by supporting the militants and the mullahs, the military militant mullah complex that we used to fight the Soviet Union and their invasion of Afghanistan most effectively. We were left with that arrangement when we went into Afghanistan. In 2002, though, our goal became widespread participation in government and economic development that could help the Afghans overcome the tendency to fight that had been built up over the years. Afghan's history tells us that the government has worked best when loose central government has coordinated regional and ethnic players throughout the country. And at first, we operated with a balance of power among the leaders and the ethnic groups in ministries and regions. But progressively, we built more and more central control. We sent our advisors, our aid workers, our NGOs, our accountants to help the Afghans develop bureaucratic structures that centralized power the way it was in Washington. Our focus on central control failed to provide the people of Afghanistan was essential services and thus with stability. Things like training of the police fell behind. District-level funding was almost non-existent, and provincial funding lagged. We required project proposals, accounting and accountability, forms and audits that could only be managed at central levels, and we sent in our inspectors and inspectors general to trace every dollar. When you hear the headline numbers about our assistance to Afghanistan, remember the words of an Afghan finance minister who said to me, eighty or ninety percent of the money you say you spend never makes it to Afghanistan. It goes to contractors, subcontractors, NGOs, security consultants, technical experts, and accountants. Each one, each level, takes a salary and charge their expenses. By and large, our money went to big contractors and subcontractors rather than empowering the Afghan government to deliver benefits to their people. There were successes, of course. Some of them have been mentioned. Girls in schools, roads, expanding health system, rebuilding institution, colleges, and hospitals. But if the goal is to anchor the Afghan government, then the Afghan government needs to deliver the benefits of governance. I visited aid workers, UN programs, SERP programs that the military ran. They all seemed quite wonderful, but they didn't involve necessarily the Afghan government delivering benefits to its own people. And therefore, it did little to cement the Afghan government. We don't do things that way because, well, for a lot of reasons, especially when it comes to supporting government at the local level. Accounting is something that's very important to our aid people and to the people who have to testify in front of Congress. And indeed, there was a great deal of corruption in Afghanistan as another fractured developing societies. But we need to work out different ways of spending money into, through the government at a local level and a tolerance for losses that allows us to work through the government and not around it. I said some of this at the time. We tried to put more emphasis on local governments. We tried to put money for governors and for the Afghan solidarity programs. But overall, I'd say I was caught up in the Washington machine and spent too much time developing strategies in Washington and not enough listening to people in Afghanistan. These are lessons for the future. We need to ask ourselves, are we really empowering a government to develop the benefit, to deliver benefits to its people? And especially ask the administration, whichever war we get involved in next, how'd that work out for you last time? Where does it leave us now in 2025? Little or no influence or visibility into Afghanistan, but we need to maintain what we can to make sure that the security threats don't reemerge. Second, our military presence in the Gulf remains essential so that we're able to act if necessary. Vigilance from afar, but not too far, seems to be required right now. And finally, we need to remember the global war on terrorists and all those who harbor them could never be achieved by military means alone. It'll be achieved by capable governments around the globe who can provide benefits to their populations. That requires more diplomacy, more foreign assistance, not more interventions. We need to lead with diplomacy backed by our military capability, not the other way around. And we need to fund US diplomacy to lead. Thank you very much. I'd be glad to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Ambassador Boucher. I yield myself five minutes to begin asking questions. My question is for Mr. Khanoune. Some US officials have said that if the Taliban were invited to Ban, other Afghans would not have come. Is that true? And did groups such as the United Front at the time discuss the idea of Taliban representation at Ban? And for the translator, I'm happy to repeat it if you need to, but please go ahead.
Please. قائد خانونی میگن که بارتواد به کانفرانس باند و صوبت پیشتر شما اشاره شما درباره ادم اشتراک نمایندگان تالبان بعضی از مقامات امیکیای ادامه کردن که اگر تالبان به این کانفرانس دعوت میشدند شاید دیگر شرکت کندها عازر نمیشدند و کانفرانس اشتراک بکنند. برداشت شما در مورد چی است؟
شکر از این سوال مهم شما باور میز که نختم قلان ترین و مهم ترین جهت در کانفرانس بن آیت جبه متحد جمله جمله که با شما مشکل بود.
I believe this is not correct. The largest group within the Ban Conference was the United Front.
ما از قبل تلاش داشتیم چندین مذاکره با تالبا را خصوصا در نزدیک نوادونو در اشخابات ما پیش بودیم. از ابتدا میخواستیم که ما از طریق مشارکت میلی به راه افغانستان حاصل کنیم.
Ahead of time, we had some communications and we met with Taliban representative back in 1999 in Ishqabad. And we wanted to have a broader-based negotiations.
تی آیات دیگر هم مخالفت نداشتند اما
Yeah, the three delegations or three parts of the Ban Conference also had no objections to that.
اما مشکل دیگه ای بود که تالبا هنوز در جریان کانفرانس در جن بودن. هنوز آدرس مشخصی نداشتند. حتی اگر اینا هم در کانفرانس شرکت میکردن شاید بخشی از تالبا در آینده از جن دست میگشیدن. اما معنی از سرگیری از جن نمیشدند.
While the Ban Conference was taking place, most of the Talibans were still busy fighting. Even if a portion of the Taliban managed to participate in Ban Conference, it would not prevent future insurgency's recurrence.
بدلیل ازی که دلیل اصلی غیرشای جن در افغانستان در بیرون از مرز افغانستان در استراتژی نظامیان پاکستان است.
I believe that the core reasons and the core elements of insurgency in Afghanistan in the war was outside the country, in the neighboring country, in militaries of the Pakistan, ISI.
حتی اگر تالبا هم از جن دست میگشیدن میقین دارم که لشکر نیابتی سومی را ایجاد میکردن بر دوم بی سواتی در افغانستان.
Even if Taliban stopped fighting with the government, I'm sure Pakistani military intelligence would create another, perhaps a third element to fight inside the government, fight an insurgency.
شکر.
Thank you. And one follow-up to my question for Mr. Khanoune. Who was making the decisions about political participation at Ban?
خانونی صفت سوال شانیست که کیها در موقع تسمینگیری بودن در کانفرانس بن؟
بیبینید که کانفرانس بن مطابق نکشیرای ایالات متحده ای ابریکا تعطی نظر ملل متحد رو اندازی شد.
The Ban Conference was under the auspices of the United Nations by roadmap from the United States was organized.
بنا تسمینگیر در مورد ایکی شرکت کنه در کانفرانس کی شرکت نکنه عمدت نمایندگان ایالات متحده ای ابریکا و آوهای لخت در ابراهيمی نمایندی سرمونشی ملل متحد.
So the decision-makers at the Ban Conference were the representatives of the United States of America and Mr. Laxdar Ibrahimiy of the United Nations.
این تسمیم مربوط با آیات آفغانستان نمیشد.
This was not a decision that was up to the delegations coming from Afghanistan.
One more follow-up. Mr. Khanoune, did you feel that the outcome was truly representative of the political order of Afghanistan? Or at the time, did you feel like this was a measure to address the immediate security concerns?
خانونی صفت شما فکر میکنید که آیا کانفرانس بسخگویه توقعات شما بر راه آینده افغانستان بود یا ایکی براساسی یک سلسله نیازهای آجل امیاتی اتفاق شده بود در این شرایط لازم؟
بیبینید تو چیز را باید تفكیح کنیم. ما در یک شرایط استراری قرار داشتیم. هدف کانفرانس بن رسیدن به ایجاد یک میکنیزم سرفن دور انتقال و گزارد. از زوباد
We were in a situation that the Ban Conference's priority was to create an interim government.
از زوباد تسمیم چگونگی تایین مسیر افغانستان چگونگی شکل دادن افغانستان آینده دولت سازی و غیره با مردم افغانستان منتقل شد. اول درلوی جرگه بعد در تدویل قانون اساسی و انتخاب.
And after the creation of an Afghan interim government, then that was up to the people of Afghanistan and the political forces in Afghanistan to form the future of Afghanistan government and participation of the Afghan people as well as the reconciliation constitution and about rebuilding effort in governance in Afghanistan.
بنا نظر ما کانفرانس در مورد سه هدف اساسی رک انتخاب کرده بود موفق بود اما اشتباه اساسی دولت مردان افغانستان در استفاده از این فرصت ها بود که متاسفانه به بیروه کشیداشد.
Those three major issues that were addressed by the conference were correctly identified, but the way it was carried out, it was some Afghan politicians did not carry out properly those decisions made by the Ban Conference.
Thank you. I yield my time. Co-chair Jackson, you are recognized.
Thank you. I have a question for Ambassador Dawood Zai. Ambassador, you stayed in your testimony that the most significant failure was the inability to pursue reconciliation with the Taliban. I would ask you to push farther on this point on three levels. The first is, what would the terms of such a reconciliation have been in this early phase? Either during the campaign or during Ban or in the immediate aftermath? Would reconciliation have meant the Taliban returning to their homes, but essentially out of power? Or would there have been some power sharing or incorporation into the government? The second question is, in your opinion, how large a portion of the Taliban movement would have been open to such overtures? Would this have been most of the Taliban, a small fraction? What's your opinion on that? And third, how did various Afghan factions outside the Taliban view this reconciliation? Were the views of Hamid Karzai the same as those of the United Front? Or were there important differences?
Ambassador Dawood Zai, you have the floor. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Please go ahead, sir.
Let me give a brief comment on possible Taliban participation in Ban Conference. I was there in a different capacity as a civil society or UN capacity I was there. There was no opposition to Taliban's participation from United Front. In fact, it was the US delegation that was opposed. And on record, in one of the press conferences, a senior US diplomat said Taliban are finished. They don't exist anymore, so therefore it's not a subject. And a bit later, six months later, when we had the Emergency Loa Jirga, that was also the best Afghan-to-Afghan opportunity to invite Taliban to participate in the Emergency Loa Jirga. I cannot recall any Afghan address that would have opposed it. But it was the international addresses that were opposing to a Taliban participation. Moving on, when I become Chief of Staff to the President in mid-2003, one of my interview, a few months after assuming the job with the Financial Times, which is in their archive, I said there are hardline Talibans and there are moderate Talibans. And why didn't we include moderate Talibans in governments and gave them a chance to join us? Believe me, within a week, the US Embassy demarched over the President's office and said, "Your Chief of Staff have said that there are moderate and there are hardline Talibans. Talibans are all terrorists like Al Qaeda and they're subject to be eliminated." And then after that, my boss, the President, asked me, "Please, don't give such interviews anymore." But anyway, my interview was heard in Taliban's addresses. A few months later, somebody called Mulasif. He appeared through an NGO and asked for a very discreet appointment with me. And he delivered a letter to me which was signed by thirty Taliban leaders. Twelve of them were ex-ministers and eighteen of them were governors. And like I said in my statement, President Karzai did not take interest at that time. And Khalilza took very long, but I must say that he came back to me and he said that, "Okay, we checked the records. We don't have anything in the previous record that they might be convicted in a court in the US, but there's no guarantee in future." However, that's the time that President Karzai decides for a very different reason to send me as ambassador to Iran and asks Saifatullah Mujadidi to take over as the man for reconciliation. And his mandate was decided by donors to be only managing surrenders, not reconciliation. So the mood was that of Taliban to be killed. I can give you the names at that stage that who would have participated as early as Ban. They had their ambassador in Islamabad. That was with Pakistan, and Pakistan would have produced him. Maula Wakil Ahmed Mutawakil was the Foreign Minister. And he had surrendered to the US forces in Kandahar. Mullah Rakiiti was there. Mullah Haqsaar had surrendered to the United Front. And United Front appointed him as Deputy Minister before the Emergency Loa Jirga. And Mullah Salam Rakiiti was Khanul Sam's best friend in the twenty years. So there were many Talibans. Except one person, he could not have been produced, and that was Mullah Umar. And I believe that nobody knew where Mullah Umar was. Even Pakistanis didn't know that where Mullah Umar was. In respect to the Afghans' opinion, I think all Afghans wanted peace. Afghans, by then, they had been through twenty years of war. And they were fed up that one group comes and then they expel the other group, either put them in prison or pushed them to migrate. And that scenario still continued. We came and we excluded Taliban. Now Taliban comes and they expel us from our country. So I was hearing this in 2002, 2003 from Afghans that where would this end? Where would we all be in the same administration? And our answer was that when we have our own rights, when we are at the helm of decision-making. I hope I have answered that question.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Dawood Zai. I recognize Commissioner Wilder. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much, the witnesses, for joining us today. And a particularly warm welcome to my Afghan friends. And again, I wish we were having some of the conversations in your homes back in Kabul, where I learned so much about Afghanistan over the years. But I also had some of the similar questions on reconciliation, but I think we've covered that. So maybe I'll direct my first question to Ambassador Boucher. We heard a lot about Pakistan, both in the previous panel as well as this panel today. And in your testimony, you also noted that it was expansion of our goals in Afghanistan beyond Al Qaeda, you know, to the Taliban, which is where the US and Pakistan interests sort of began to diverge. I'm wondering if you knew, to what extent were US policymakers aware at the time of that risk of a divergence of interests at that point as we expanded the focus? And was there optimism, if so, that there'd be a, you know, a characteristic approach could be used to change their strategic calculations? Or if not, you know, was, at what point was there a recognition we would never be able to change Pakistan's strategic calculus?
I can speak mostly to the 2006, 2009 period when I was pretty intensely involved with Pakistan. I guess, you know, the interest that Pakistan had was to make sure that friends of theirs were participating in government. That wasn't a very high bar, frankly. They, you know, they wanted to have influence there. I don't think they wanted to actually control any territory or control any parts of the government. So I think more or less, we felt that having people in government that were friendly with them was sufficient. You know, we were concerned about a lot of other things with Pakistan. You know, we were trying to prevent nuclear war between Pakistan and India. We were trying to help Pakistan stabilize itself and stop the terrorism that was coming in. So, and we're trying to return Pakistan from military rule to democracy. So there was a whole lot on the plate working with Pakistan at the time. Afghanistan was one of the things. We talked to them a lot about Afghanistan, but it wasn't the most salient issue, I guess I'd have to say.
Direct my next question to Professor Natsios. Again, there have been many criticisms I've heard over the years, maybe most often by our military leaders who served in Afghanistan on the deficiencies of USAID stabilization efforts in Afghanistan. Although many of these, I think, focused on the civilian surge period in particular, where I think you are no longer directly involved. But I guess my question is whether you would attribute the failure of stabilization efforts in Afghanistan and the civilian surge, was that an implementation problem? Or is that the very theory and model of stabilization was flawed? Because you could make the argument that Afghanistan, frankly, was always poor, never really had services, never had much infrastructure, certainly out of the urban areas. And so the assumption that doing more and giving more out in the rural areas in terms of services or infrastructure would be stabilizing, it's not quite clear where that came from. Maybe the Iraq model. But again, if you could just comment again on this issue of stabilization as an implementation problem or a model problem, or maybe a combination of both. Thank you.
Several points. I'm a former lieutenant colonel. I'm not hospital in the military. Military, other than civil affairs officers, do not know anything about development and reconstruction. They made a lot of very serious mistakes early on that we had to pick up messes from. And I'll give, I can give you a lot of examples if you want to. But we, I wrote in, I had the career staff write an article called "The Principles of Reconstruction and Development", nine of them. And we had them published in the parameters, which is the Army War College Journal. It's regard, I didn't write it by names on it. And we published it because the military kept asking, "What are your doctrines?" I said, "Here are our doctrines." And we still use that. And by the way, the principles made their way into some of the field manuals that were written as a result of Iraq and Afghanistan. The difference between Afghanistan and Iraq is enormous. There were thousands of engineers in Iraq. The one thing the Iraqis could do is build things. They also had a geography that was conducive, because it's all flat except for the northern area in the Kurds. because it's all flat except for the northern area in the Kurds. Afghanistan has probably the worst geography to do development, especially if you want to do construction in the whole world. Hazarajad is 28,000 feet high in some areas, 30 feet of snow in the wintertime. It is very difficult to do it. There were no roads in many areas. So I think there are huge differences between, and Iraq was a middle-income country. Afghanistan was one of the poorest countries in the world, even before the war with the Russians and then 1990s. Secondly, the military saw reconstruction as literally construction projects. If you read all of development literature, all of the development theory and practice, no one says that that's what development is. Development is building institutions. The military kept saying, "Build more roads, build more schools." We said, "That's not the problem. The problem is the institutions to build them and maintain them." And we wanted to focus on that. The military and the embassy put heavy focus on the construction projects. And if you look at the first 10 years of spending that the GAO did a report on, 35% or 40% of it was construction projects. It was roads, bridges, electrical power. A third of the country has electricity now, or when we left, it did. It didn't have almost any anywhere, except for a few pockets when we arrived. So we spent a lot of money on infrastructure. And when Richard says, with all due respect, we had all these contractors. Of course we did. Who is going to do construction projects? Santa Claus? Mother Teresa? We have to hire engineers in construction projects, and who told us to do that? The embassy did, and the military did. They wanted more and more construction projects, and I'll tell you why. This is a problem in any war zone. The military wants, and the State Department and the CIA, I might add, want to be able to visualize development, and politicians do locally too. They want to see the development. They want it very quick. Institutions take 10 to 20 years to build. In Afghanistan, we had 21-year development programs, 21-year programs.
Professor Natsios.
We should have had one program that lasted 20 years.
We are at time. I will return to this topic of contractors. And Ambassador Boucher, I'll give you some time to respond to it. That will be my question to you, but just sit tight. You can think about Santa Claus and Mother Teresa in the meantime, okay? Thank you, Professor Natsios. We'll go to Commissioner Mukapadhyay, please.
Thank you so much. Like Commissioner Wilder, I wish we were having this conversation in Kabul. My questions are for Your Excellency Dowdze and Khanouni. In your testimonies, you both pointed to a number of early decisions and approaches that undermined the possibilities for lasting peace and governance in Afghanistan. I wonder if you can say more to us about how did those of you inside the Afghan government understand the relationship between the American War on Terror and your own efforts at building the Afghan state? Did you see yourselves as partners with the United States in control of your own government or as something else? Thank you.
So why don't we go to the translator first for Mr. Khanouni? Please go ahead. For the translator, would you like us to repeat the question? Okay, let's pause there and we can go to Ambassador Dowdze to answer first. And we will go back if we are able to. Ambassador Dowdze, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yes, there was that dilemma of state-building versus counterterrorism or nation-building versus counterterrorism. And that became a serious issue after President Karzai became elected president. As elected president, he became more responsive to the rural population, particularly in the south. And as part of the counterterrorism, NATO-US soldiers were going to villages in search of al-Qaeda and the bad Taliban leaders. And not knowing that they were disrupting the normal nation-building process, they were disrupting the state-to-periphery relationship. So, and then they went for night raids. In the middle of the night, they landed in people's houses, roofs. And the next day, then the villagers would call the president. And president had the system that any Afghan could call his office and could give a message to the president. And that severed relationship between the president and the military and enlarged the distance between the ministries and the villages and the ministries and districts. Of course, there were efforts. PRTs were there. We established thousands of councils under the Rural Development Ministry, under the IDLG, many other efforts were made. But then the counterterrorism was not stopping intruding into Afghan villages. And I remember many encounters where President Karzai said, "There are no terrorists in my villages. They are across the Duran Line. So go there and search for them there." I think he was exaggerating, but he was trying to make a point that you are harming my nation-building process. And in respect to the early decisions that we missed opportunities for reconciliation, I mentioned, we mentioned the Bourn process. We also mentioned the Emergency Loi Ajirga. But it was a more serious discussion during the Constitutional Loi Ajirga. Because some Afghans wanted Taliban to be part of the constitutional approval process, so that they own the constitution when it's approved. That's where we still faced resistance from US diplomats. And let me conclude that part with saying, we in the palace, in the presidential palace, we, the staff, not the president, we would say, we have three presidents, Khalilzad, Ibrahimiy, and Karzai. And Karzai is the least powerful. Power is with the others. And as chief of the cabinet, I'm witness to many of the cabinet decisions. But then the next day, President Karzai will come and say, "Brothers, let's revise the decision we made yesterday." So then the ministers, including Mr. Khanouni, they would bust to each other's ears and say, "It's Ibrahimiy or Khalilzad gave him a call last night, and he's revising the cabinet decision." So, I mean, Afghans in those years were not really independent in their decision-making. And I must briefly comment on what His Excellency Khanouni has said, that at some point, President Karzai and his team excluded the United Front's people from the government. He is right. After the 2005 elections, then there was a discussion that in order to calm Pakistan, let's give more space in the cabinet to the graduates of Pakistani universities. So we brought graduates of Pakistani university to the cabinet. So the United Front had to leave because they had contested the election against President Karzai anyway. So there was a reason. So anyway, I mean, we have tried many things. It didn't really work, and that's why it failed.
Thank you, Ambassador. Mr. Khanouni, are you able to comment?
I will jump in and translate the question. Qamnise, خانم کمشنر دیپالی سوال میکنن که شما قبلاً یک تسامیح بشید. کیوہاں برخور ریش کردید که امکانات تسلف دامدار و دولت داری رو در افغانستان ختشه زدن. من علاقه مندم تا در این باره از شما بیشتر بشنو. استراتژی اردوی امریکا و متحیدینشان به ارتباط قوای خودشان و در رابطه با تالiban و مجاهدین چگونه بر توانایی اداره کرزای و در اداره امور دولت داری تاثیر گذار بودن؟ شما و دیگرانی که در دستگاه دولت افغانستان کار میکردید، چگونه مناسبات بین جنگ امریکا علای تروریزم و فعالیت های خود رو در ایجاد یک دولت درک و ازیابی میکردید؟
بسیار تشکر خانم از سوال مهم شما. با ضمن تعید فرماشات جناب آقای Dowdze. چند نقطه کوتارو میخوام توضیح بدم؟
Thank you, Mrs. Commissioner DePauli, for your question. And in agreement with Mr. Dowdze, I wanted to point to some issues.
مبارزه با تروریزم در افغانستان یا دواوم جنگ در برابر تروریزم یک زر راد؟
Fighting against terrorism in Afghanistan and the continuation of this fight was a priority and a necessity.
همی دلیل حضور نظامی های امریکا و اتراف بین امریکه در افغانستان بود.
And that was the main reason for the existence of American forces and allied forces in Afghanistan.
مشکل دیگی شروع شد که بین سه هدف بزرگی که تعین شد، مبارزه با تروریزم، دولت سازی، توزیع زی ساختای اقتصادی اما انگی لازم صورت نگرده.
The three main objectives that were put forward, counterterrorism measures, building the economic infrastructure, and governance, did not happen. There was no coordination of these efforts.
تصویری که در ابتدا هم یادآواری کردم، یک استراتژی تعریف شده توسط نظامیان امریکا در مبارزه با تروریزم شکل نگرده.
There was not a clear strategy in fighting against terrorism by the American military.
افکیک بین تالب و al-Qaeda اشتباه بود.
To separate the Taliban from al-Qaeda was a major mistake.
این طرف هر کیز بیشتره، نظامی های امریکا ابتدا بالای al-Qaeda صورت گرفت. بعد مسئوفیتشان در جنگ ایراق، بقی دوب مسئله دیگر دولت سازی در افغانستان، باز سازی افغانستان در سایه قرار گرفت.
Because of the focus on fighting with al-Qaeda and also the responsibilities and attention diversion to Iraq, that hampered the efforts of fighting terrorism in Afghanistan as well as the creation of an Afghan government and reconstruction of infrastructure.
باکن در جنگ ناجید گرفتن، فرهنگ افغانستان مشکل کرده.
Ignoring the cultural sensitivities of Afghanistan during the fight in the war was causing major problems.
ازیل حاس بهتر بود که بین مبارزه با تروریزم، دولت سازی و توزیع در افغانستان اما انگی با وجود نومد.
That's why it was very important to have a correlation between these three objectives of fighting terrorism, nation-building, and economic infrastructure rebuilding.
اشتباه دیگی که وجود داشتی بود که ایالات متحیدی امریکا تمام تخمای مرغ در یک سبب در دولت افغانستان گزارش.
Unfortunately, the other major mistake was that the United States put all the eggs in one basket in Afghanistan government.
و همی سبب مشکل شد در ابتدا و بعد سبب سکوت نظام در افغانستان.
And that's the major cause of the problems and eventually the fall of the Afghan government.
Thank you, Your Excellency. I will now recognize Commissioner Miller. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Thanks to all the witnesses for some really excellent testimony. I'll ask a couple of, I think, a little bit more narrow questions here. One for Ambassador Dowdze and one for Professor Natsios. For Ambassador Dowdze, regarding the episode that you described in 2004 where President Karzai rejected or declined to follow up on outreach from the Taliban, can you give us your judgment as to why he did that? Was it because President Karzai anticipated that the Americans would object? Was it because he wasn't interested in potential additional political competition if they were included into governance? And for Professor Natsios, thank you very much in your written testimony for highlighting some things that I regard as quite important, including the ways in which there were clashes of expectations, understandings, and particularly regarding the time horizons for the kinds of changes that the US was trying to effectuate. And related to that, I appreciate the way that you pointed out the fallacy of the idea that if we just coordinate better across agencies, everything's going to be fine. My question for you is, given those comments and your others as well, was there during your time period, space in the policy process, particularly the policy process managed by the NSC, to say what isn't realistic, what isn't feasible, what does take a longer period of time than we might prefer or hope? Or were the views of the civilian agencies in that regard brushed aside in the context in which the military's preferences and priorities, given that we had troops on the ground in Afghanistan, were given a more privileged hearing?
So let us go to Ambassador Dowdze first, please.
Thank you, madam. So nice to see you here. I remember the long discussions we used to have in the US Embassy or in my house. Good old memories. But anyway, yes, President Karzai, 2004, 2005, he was against any form of reconciliation, except selectively some of the people who are important from Greater Kandahar region. He wanted to reconcile. So that means he wanted to do fishing within Taliban, but not a reconciliation with Taliban to enhance his power base in Kandahar, particularly from his own tribe or his allied tribes. He would send somebody even to Guantanamo and release some Taliban from Guantanamo and invite them to the palace and then reconcile them. But then I do not call reconciliation. And he was scared of the US reaction also, because he considered the US support important for his reelection or for his election in 2004 and his continuation in power subsequently. So, but his opinion changed after the Panjwai encounter between Taliban and Canadian forces in 2006. If I am not wrong on the date, it was either late 2005 or early 2006, because that's the time I'm serving as ambassador in Iran. And in that encounter between Taliban, Taliban managed to stand against the Canadian forces. And Canadian forces asked for US support. And the US army intervened. They defeated Taliban on the surface. But Taliban entrenched in the villages, starting from that point, in Kandahar. When I came back from Iran, I saw that Karzai's language was different. He said, for the first time, I heard him saying that there is no military solution to this problem. While before that, he considered Taliban as Musharaf's troops. He would refer to them as Musharaf's troops. But now his opinion has changed, and he used the language of reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. Professor Natsios, we have about one minute for a response. Please go ahead.
Well, first time horizon. Stanley McChrystal is a very smart guy. We had great respect for him. When he wrote that plan, all the career people were appalled. Because he thought we could do the build part of it in a couple of years. You don't build a school just by going in and building it. You have to get the community to agree to it. You have to get the ministry to agree to it. And then you have to find out who owns the land you want to build on, because there is no deed system in Afghanistan. And so it would take a long time of process before we build anything. We also had the Congress pass a law saying all AID projects have to conform the American Disabilities Act. There's a law requiring us to do an environmental impact statement. We have to comply with the federal acquisition regulations and bid everything out, which takes a takes a year and a half. We didn't write those laws. The Congress did. And with the administration's support in the White House, because the president signed these laws, we didn't make up these processes. Why did we hire consultants? Because you required us to. I wrote an article that was widely read in AID called "The Clash of the Counterbureaucracy and Development," published by the Center for Global Development, if you want to go into this in more depth. So our time horizon, and McChrystal realized it when we explained it to him. Some of the career people said Petraeus also made a mistake, and other career people said he did not understand. McChrystal clearly understood there was a mistake. Finally, this coordination business. There's a huge, huge amount of studies done on coordination in the federal government, and they all conclude the same thing. It does not work for the reasons that Seidman says in the quote in my written testimony. I didn't make that up. It doesn't work because there are clashing objectives and clashing missions and clashing statutes that we have complied with. The Defense Department doesn't have to comply. When they build a school, they don't have to comply with the American Disabilities Act, and they exempted themselves from the FAR, the Federal Acquisition Regulation, and environmental impact statements. We had to comply with those. Of course, it took longer to do all those things.
Thank you, Professor Natsios. Actually, I'm going to use my co-chair prerogative to call on Ambassador Bautcher to respond to the previous comment from Professor Natsios about U.S. government use of contractors. Please, sir, go ahead.
I guess I'd have to say yes. The way we spend money, we have to use contractors. But maybe we shouldn't spend money that way. The money needs to be spent on the ground through the Afghan government, and we have to reconcile ourselves to the fact that we're going to lose 20%, 30% due to graft and corruption, that somebody's cousin is going to be the contractor. But I'd rather lose the money in Afghanistan, as whatever we call it, economic stimulus, than lose it in the Beltway. So, yeah, it's fact of life. If you want to keep the accounting going, then, yeah, you have to spend it through American contractors. Can I just say, I'll tell you one story. Try to make it quick. So this has to do with military money. So I was at a forward operating base talking to the platoon leader in charge, I guess, a lieutenant probably. And I asked him about, what are you doing in the community? And he says, oh, yeah, we do these projects. We build little dams here and little schools there and stuff like that. And I said, oh, do you involve the Afghan district chief? And he said, yeah, we bring him along. Well, we bring him along. I mean, what kind of impression does that give people when this guy's trailing along behind an American Army officer? The fact is, the only way to get out of these things, the only way to build stability in the region is to let the government deliver what they can to the people.
Thank you, Ambassador. I recognize Commissioner Hardig. You have five minutes.
Thank you, everybody, for the great testimony so far. Ambassador Bautcher, you've alluded to a lot of these pieces, but I'd love to just lift up a level strategically and say, what do you think were two or three of the most problematic aspects to our state-building and aid-delivery efforts?
You know, I think our biggest problem is we're Americans. We think we've got a great system. We think we've got a way of doing things that's the best in the world. And when we help people, we want to help people develop those same things. We couldn't go into Afghanistan and say, well, good enough's good enough. We had to go in and say, you need ministries, you need interagency meetings, you need elections, you need, you know, whatever, you know, judges and lawyers and the whole system. And we don't have anything between zero and America. And I think that was our biggest problem, trying to make an American system work in Afghanistan.
Let me follow up on that. Where do you think were the places where there was the greatest kind of misalignment between U.S. goals and efforts and Afghan preferences and priorities?
The Afghans have a long history of reconciling with their enemies. I think we found it harder to countenance that, to imagine that. I don't ever remember telling President Karzai, don't talk to those guys, but I certainly felt like the U.S. government as a whole was trying to keep them away from reconciling. And there were, you know, there were occasional moments. I remember when Hecmat Yar's folks got us a message saying they wanted to talk to us, and we said, tell it to the Afghan government. But I do think the Afghan government felt that we weren't willing to let them do that.
And was that strategic decision, was that just kind of a generally assumed point within the U.S. government, or were there particular forces who were driving this idea of not reconciling?
No, you know, I think it was an attitude more than a decision. And we were smart. I mean, these guys, you know, the Taliban, and by harboring Al Qaeda, remember, the president said, we're going to eliminate the terrorists and all those who harbor them, right? That was the instruction from day one or day two. So the Taliban were all those who harbor them. So I don't think the United States, those of us who are working this problem at different levels, felt that reconciliation with the Taliban was on the table for us.
Were there voices, perhaps those who had, you know, worked in Afghanistan in the 1980s or any time prior to 2001, who were urging this sort of reconciliation and this kind of approach?
I don't remember any, but some of your commissioners may be able to answer that question better than I can.
Great. Thank you. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Commissioner Crocker, you are recognized.
Thank you. And let me start by saying to Speaker Kanuni and Ambassador Dowdze, it is great to see you again, even via remote. And your participation, I think, reminds us all that for you and so many of your countrymen, your commitment and your sacrifice for Afghanistan is measured not in months or even in years, but in decades. Professor Natsios, I was your host for your January 2002 visit, a visit not without its own excitement. And as I recall, USAID under your direction was already engaged in state-building. We visited, as I recall, a girls' school already up and running in Kabul, and we discussed the importance of concentration on the agricultural sector, not just for immediate famine relief, but as a long-term underpinning of a sustainable Afghan economy. And we discussed the importance of roads, as you've noted in your testimony. So my question is to drill down a little bit more on the notion of timelines. Were there any conversations in Washington among principals over the amount of time it would likely take for the initiatives that you launched in early 2002 to have lasting effect? That you've noted the various constraints on USAID moving rapidly, but the developmental imperative is also there. So at the beginning, were there any conversations that you recall or you were part of that focused on the length of time it would take for these long-term initiatives to actually pay off? Thank you.
Professor Natsios, please go ahead.
I recall raising it, Ryan. By the way, I do recall, we also had a meeting, as you recall, outside the embassy, and we're discussing this in January of 2002. And Taliban still controlled the mountain that overlooked the embassy, and they started mortaring or bombing the embassy, so we had to go underground. It was, the notion that Kabul was clear was not quite true. But to go to your question of the timeline, we raised it, eight AID officers raised it repeatedly, over and over again, year by year, but that was not, they were not interested, no one was interested in hearing that. It was very sort of inconvenient. And the military kept saying, why do you have to talk to everyone before you build a school? I said, because the school is just the building. If the Ministry of Education is not going to put teachers in the school and textbooks, why would we build it? And sometimes they would say, there's no children in that village, or very few. You don't need a school there, and we're not going to put people in it. I might also add, later, 2012 and '13, the AID administrator called the mission director and said, 80% of the money on agriculture will be spent in the south, in the southeast Pushdun area, the center of Taliban control. We said, they'll kill us if we go down there. And they said, we don't care. You have to make it work. You can say that all you want to, but the reality is, you can't run an aid program if the aid workers are being murdered. Everybody talked about honoring our troops. No one, including the Afghans, said anything about all the aid workers, including Afghans who were murdered. 500 aid workers, more than that, were murdered in the course of those 20 years by the Taliban, because we didn't have protection. The military did not protect us or our programs. That was not their objective, it was to defeat the Taliban. Some of the people were beheaded in front of their own staffs. It was absolutely barbaric. Do you think that encouraged people to go down and work in these insurgency areas? Of course not. So we raised it, Ryan, but it was not well received, I have to tell you.
Thank you very much. This brings us to the conclusion of Panel Two. I would like to thank our witnesses for their candor and their honesty and their insight. The discussion that we had during this panel will no doubt feature prominently in our analysis, so we very much appreciate it. We are going to quickly now shift to Panel Three. So Panel Two witnesses, you are dismissed, and we will shift the room.
Thank you very much for having me.
I know, short break, guys. The third and final panel will examine the evolution of U.S. military planning and operations in the initial years of the Afghanistan war, with particular attention to the early articulation and implementation of counterinsurgency concepts. We will assess how tactical and operational priorities developed in response to a rapidly shifting threat environment, including the reconstitution of the Taliban and the persistent presence of Al Qaeda. The discussion will also address the early dynamics of U.S.-Pakistan security cooperation, which focused on counterterrorism operations against Al Qaeda. We will examine how this cooperation was juxtaposed against the concurrent expansion of Taliban sanctuaries within Pakistan's border regions. I'd like to recognize Co-Chair Jackson to introduce our panel.
Thank you to both of our witnesses, only one of whom, General Barnau, was able to be here in person. General Stalder is joining us remotely. Lieutenant General Keith Stalder served in the United States Marine Corps for 37 years, from 1973 until his retirement in 2010. Among his many high-profile assignments and most relevant to our discussion today, during Operation Enduring Freedom, he commanded Marine Fighter Attack Squadron 531 and Marine Aviation Weapons and Tactics Squadron 1, as well as being the Deputy Director for Plans and Policy, United States Central Command. While on active duty, General Stalder also served as commanding general of the United States Marine Corps Pacific, and before that, commanding general of Second Marine Expeditionary Force. As a senior marine representative of the U.S. Pacific Command, he was instrumental in negotiating international accords on basing for U.S. forces in Japan and strengthening alliances in East Asia and the Pacific. He also held senior command positions as commanding general Training and Education Command, commanding general Third Marine Aircraft Wing in Iraq, and deputy commanding general First Marine Expeditionary Force in Operation Iraqi Freedom. Following his retirement, General Stalder founded an advisory firm, KSA Integration, and has been a senior fellow at the Center for Naval Analysis, the Potomac Institute for Policy Studies, and the Global Resilience Institute. He served as the national commander of the Marine Corps Aviation Association for five and a half years and is a member of the Golden Eagles. A graduate of Emory Riddle Aeronautical University, he holds a master's degree in aeronautics. Lieutenant General David Barnau, who was with us here in person, completed a 30-year active-duty Army career during which he commanded at every level, serving as an infantry officer, ranger, and paratrooper. He completed three tours in Special Operations Forces, serving with Army Ranger battalions in combat during both the Panama and Grenada invasions. In 2003, he was selected to establish a new three-star operational headquarters in Kabul, Afghanistan, and take command of the 20,000 U.S. and coalition forces serving in Operation Enduring Freedom. For 19 months, General Barnau was responsible for overall coalition military leadership of the war in Afghanistan, implementing a new counterinsurgency strategy in close partnership with the U.S. Embassy and coalition allies. Following his military career, General Barnau served as Director of the Near East and South Asia Center for Strategic Studies, excuse me, at the National Defense University, and concurrently as the Chairman of the Advisory Committee to the Secretary of Veterans Affairs on Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom, Veterans and Families. He has spent time working for and on behalf of numerous think tanks and academic institutions, including the Center for New American Security, the United States Army War Colleges Board of Visitors, and the Council on Foreign Relations. He is currently a professor of practice at the Johns Hopkins School of Advanced International Studies.
Thank you, Co-Chair Jackson. General Stalder, you are recognized for your opening statement. Can you hear us, sir?
Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely. Welcome. Please go ahead. Good to see you.
Good to see you, and thanks, everybody. Chairperson Chaudry Jackson, member of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity to appear here regarding your view of the war in Afghanistan. You and your talented team have taken on an enormous and very important task, as you know. I was the Deputy Director for Plans and Policies and Strategy, the DJ Five, from 2000 to 2002 at U.S. Central Command. My next assignment after that was as the Deputy Commanding General of the First Marine Expeditionary Force, during which one F was a major part of Operation Iraqi Freedom One. For some beginning context, as you know, in November of 2000, President Bush had won the election very shortly thereafter. The CENTCOM staff began interacting with Mr. Doug Fith, who would be the Undersecretary of Defense for Policy, and Mr. Steve Cambeau, who would be a special assistant to Secretary Rumsfeld. The tone, optics, and substance of those interactions, were, to put it uncharitably, I'll admit, was a my-way-or-the-high-way sort of optic, as I best recall. And this vibe endured. The new administration's team also brought a strong dislike for what was called nation building, a hangover from the nation's experience in Bosnia. Nation building was not defined, had a different meaning for everyone, was clearly in disfavor, and was a major driver of decisions in Afghanistan and later Iraq. When the 9/11 attacks occurred, there were no war plans or contingency plans for combat operations in Afghanistan. No in-country military presence, and an understandably high sense of urgency to strike back at the perpetrators. The combatant command and service component staffs were operating at peacetime personnel levels and tempos, with peacetime processes, peacetime authorities, and peacetime decision-making. CENTCOM and its components had to evolve, get the right talent, many more people, train them, and adapt its processes, authorities, and decision-making. By default, CENTCOM became the Afghanistan warfighting headquarters, something it was not designed to do. My director at the J Five was by necessity focused on liaison with interagency partners, building a growing and disparate coalition. building a growing and disparate coalition, enabling overflight and basing permissions and humanitarian relief, asking partner nations to deploy enabling forces, and more. All of this demanded lots of bureaucratic engagement to get anything done to set the theater for combat operations. As an example, at the end of two thousand and one, the theater was still not set. Every flight in the country and the region was a major effort for approvals, fuel, air traffic control coordination, ramp space, crew building, you name it. There was not enough influence or bandwidth from the CENTCOM staff to adequately act as an overall integrator and provide that optimum battle management at the time. Getting and sustaining U.S. inter-agency support from organizations which were also accustomed to peacetime operations was excruciatingly painful and bureaucratic at times. The National Command Authority was trying to figure out what to do in Afghanistan, and from my perspective, with no end state in mind. Unity of effort from the national to the tactical level suffered greatly. Current operations dominated daily thinking and activities at every level. In the early days of necessity, current operations dominated the actions from the DOD level to the forces on the ground. But the need to develop a clear national strategy never took hold. The necessity of doing so was clear to the CENTCOM and joint staff, and they articulated it frequently. But developing a national strategy never gained favor or support within the office of the Secretary of Defense, as far as I could tell. I attributed this in large part to Secretary Rumsfeld's leadership style, which was very demanding and near-term focused. Inside the staffs, it was current operations, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, and the level of integration suffered because of it. It was great people trying to do everything, everywhere, all at once, and we needed a clear, unifying guidance. An example of this gap was in the creation of the Afghan National Security Forces in oh-two. My team believed that it would take a decade to build with proper resourcing, and it could not be done by special forces alone. Things in Afghanistan were worse than most people thought. Building the ANSF wasn't going to be quick or easy, given the lack of infrastructure, damage from years of war, lack of human capital, and so on. Those perspectives were not at all popular with the OSD staff, as I recall. Different senior service members tried to drive the dialogue towards the strategic, but didn't have much luck, as far as I could tell. And finally, on that topic, if military affairs are too important to be left to the generals, they're also too important to be left just to the civilians. A non-defined end state at the National Command level leads to chaos at every level. Coalition operations were very important. The nine eleven attacks produced an international outpouring of support for our nation. At CENTCOM, I was doing the coordinating, integrating, and implementing of the myriad contributors and their highly individual offerings. These ranged from the highly capable British Prince, Aussies, and NATO allies, to those whose participation required extensive U.S. augmentation. But even modest contributors were welcomed and appreciated for the demonstration of support. Nearly fifty nations assisted while I was there without whom the U.S. could not have begun to succeed in Afghanistan and later Iraq. Many of those nations sacrificed the lives of their soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines in our cause. The NATO allies were particularly important. They were the most capable contributors and served for many years. It would not have been possible to accomplish what we did in Afghanistan without the selfless support of our allies, partners, and contributors. And the wellstream of that willingness was a long history of trust in working with the U.S. It would do us well to remember and protect our relationships for inevitable future conflicts. And finally, learning and applying the wrong lessons to Iraq. Secretary Rumsfeld was a major factor in the decision to go to war in Iraq and in the way it was done. As I had seen even before nine eleven, he strongly felt that military leaders and planners wanted more forces than they actually needed to accomplish their missions. As a participant in a twice-daily video teleconference with the secretary, beginning in the fall of oh-one, I perceive that our early battlefield successes in Afghanistan, involving very small numbers of U.S. forces, reinforced this thinking. In the spring of oh-two, when CENTCOM planners began to plan for Iraq, I believe that the secretary was convinced that minimal forces were required. Iraq and Afghanistan were both marked by highly unrealistic assumptions about how rapidly progress could be made when it depended on institutional and cultural change. A proper strategy might have prevented that. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I hope my recollections are helpful, and look forward to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, General Stalder. I'll ask, I'll recognize General Barnau for his testimony. Welcome, sir.
Well, thank you very much, distinguished co-chairs and commissioners. Thank you very much for granting me the opportunity to testify today. I'm honored to take part in this session. I've spent a lot of time since my era in Afghanistan, thinking about the Afghanistan war and revisiting some of the many decisions we made over the last twenty years and trying to think and make sense of all those. As you know, I served as one of the earliest commanders of U.S. and coalition forces in Afghanistan, arriving in October two thousand and three and departing in May of two thousand and five. I also had the opportunity to travel back to the war for several assessment visits between early two thousand and eight and two thousand and thirteen, observing the changing arc of the conflict and testifying before Congress many times as a result of those visits and providing insights and observations. And perhaps some of those may be useful in some of your future sessions, having a bit of a longitudinal look that's not common, I think, among the commanders who served there. I also want to note that both my sons served in Afghanistan and were part of the family business of being in the military in the years after I left. They regularly encountered their childhood friends from military bases all around the U.S., serving beside them in Afghanistan in uniform, some of whom were wounded, some of whom did not come home. So as a former commander and as a military parent of soldiers who served out there, I very much understand the costs of this war and the impact on the military families who sent their sons and daughters to fight, many of those among my colleagues serving in uniform. So I arrived in Afghanistan in October two thousand and three, almost six months after the invasion of Iraq. Afghanistan was governed at the time by an interim government under Hamid Karzai, but very much still in the grip of warlord armies who controlled more tanks, more rockets, more artillery, and more heavy weaponry than the central government. The Iraq war had drained significant resources, military headquarters, and attention away from Afghanistan. The United States had about one hundred and forty thousand troops in Iraq at the time versus about fourteen thousand in Afghanistan, ninety percent fewer, in a country that was one-third larger than Iraq with a population about the same size. I'd like to share the brief guidance that I received on taking command from my boss, General John Abizaid, Commander of U.S. Central Command. And these are from actual notes taken in a video conference in October two thousand and three. I would note that this was the most expansive guidance that I recall receiving during my entire nineteen months in Afghanistan, and it helped me frame the decisions I made and the direction ultimately for the command. So here is the guidance I received. Dave, your job is to build and lead a big poll, little mill, meaning big political, little military, command in Afghanistan. Your commander in Bagram, which was forty miles up the road from Kabul, should fight the tactical fight. Work with the inter-agency and internationals to integrate all existing campaign plans among the players. Actively engage with key players in Pakistan and Afghanistan and others in the Central Asia region. Expand provincial reconstruction teams. Set conditions for the fall two thousand and four Afghan national elections. Raise U.S. public awareness of the Operation Enduring Freedom or Afghanistan effort. Tactically, territory is not important. Continue to hunt al-Qaeda, but seek to reintegrate lower-level Taliban. Work closely with the CENTCOM staff. And finally, be frugal, but tell me what you need. The war in Afghanistan in two thousand and three, when I arrived, had become what the U.S. military would describe as an economy of force effort, meaning my job was to get the very most effect out of the limited resources I had and not to expect many more. My first task was to stand up a new headquarters in Kabul without any new resources, and given Abizaid's guidance, to develop a plan to better integrate the U.S. military effort with all other embassy and international efforts underway. These included the lead nation approach set up at the Bond Conference in two thousand and one to disarm, demobilize, and reintegrate warlord militias led by Japan, reform police led by Germany, build a new Afghan national army led by the United States, initiate justice reform under Italy, and address counter-narcotics under the United Kingdom. On the security front, the Taliban, when I arrived, were a low-level but concerning threat, primarily concentrated in the south and east of the country along the border with Pakistan. Based on my assessment from a visit in September, I saw this threat as a nascent insurgency requiring a different strategy than the military's ongoing counter-terror approach when I arrived. The United Nations Assistance Mission in Afghanistan, UNAMA, led by Lachtar Brahimi, also challenged me early in my tenure to address this problem to better enable their operations with the upcoming election. In response, we accelerated our development of what would become a new counterinsurgency strategy, which is detailed in some of the read-ahead materials I submitted and which we can talk more about. Before turning to your questions, let me identify three areas, I think, looking back in retrospect, are key components that undermined the U.S.'s possibility of success during the two decades of war. First, a failure to achieve unity of effort. We've heard elements of this already in the testimony this morning. The continuing failure to achieve effective integration of U.S. political, military, diplomatic, and economic efforts over the course of the war, much less NATO and other international efforts, often resulted in a hole that was less than the sum of the parts. If counterinsurgency campaigns, which many experts would argue, myself included, are in fact only twenty percent military in nature and eighty percent comprising these other factors, then the importance of unifying and integrating all parts of the strategy and its execution is absolutely essential, and the lack of such integration makes failure far more likely. Number two, a lack of leadership continuity. The rapid-fire turnover of U.S. military and diplomatic leadership in Afghanistan over the twenty-year war all but guaranteed a fragmented stop-and-start approach that continually shifted directions. Our effort in Afghanistan was led by, by my count, approximately fifteen different senior U.S. commanders and twelve different U.S. ambassadors or chargés between two thousand and one and two thousand and twenty-one. No successful enterprise could function under those levels of turnover. Finally, the enemy had an external sanctuary. Throughout the war in Afghanistan, both the Taliban and al-Qaeda could count upon a relative safe haven in Pakistan, where they could fall back and regroup when under pressure throughout the war. Pakistan putatively supported U.S. operations against these groups, but tacitly allowed Taliban leaders to live and operate in its cities and in the ungoverned spaces along the Afghanistan border. That enabled them to escape whenever and whatever new offensive strategy was underway led by the U.S. and NATO, and merely waited out until the time was right to return. Winning a war against an enemy that has such an escape valve is a formidable and perhaps unrealistic task. There are a wide range of topics we can discuss today, and I very much look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, General Barnau. I'll ask the commissioners and the participants to please keep your questions and answers as crisp as possible. That will allow us to get through the substance that we'd like to get through in the time that we have. I recognize Commissioner Allen. You have five minutes.
Thank you so much, General, for being here. General Barnau, I was going to ask you what guidance you felt like you had received from the President, but it seems like the Abizaid guidance probably suffices for that. Did that feel like what your job was supposed to be, and was it sufficient? Did it give you enough clarity?
I think that was very clear-cut. It was also very concise, and as I noted, it was the most guidance I received while I was there, which was fine in terms of my outlook. So my goal was to take that, shape that, design my own mission statement, which I did, ensure all the actors above me, including back here in Washington, knew what direction we were moving in, but to capitalize on the guidance I had and maintain that conversation with Abizaid almost on a weekly basis throughout the time I was there. So he was my principal conduit in the chain of command, looking upwards. I saw Secretary Rumsfeld about quarterly. We can talk about other interactions on video conference similar to what General Stalder has talked about, which occurred starting about six months later on. But I felt I had more than enough guidance and could refresh that as I needed to with my bosses.
General Stalder, did you similarly feel like you had enough guidance to move forward in your mission?
The guidance we got was very tactical. And frankly, in the early days, it came by and large through those twice-a-day VTCs with the secretary. And then later on, that evolved to various communications, telephonically and in those ways. But it was very, it was very tactical. It was very near-term. It was very reactive, and it was very focused on finding Osama bin Laden. We did not, in the time I was there, ever get what I would have, what I would have wanted as genuine strategy of ends ways, means, looked at from a national level, not just the military aspects of that.
Okay, so you didn't have like a crystal-clear view of what the principles of the President were looking for, it sounds like.
I saw no, I saw no national strategy here guiding that effort.
Okay, thank you. General Barnau, in particular, as Washington's attention shifted to Iraq, what did it mean to you to have more local control over things in Afghanistan, and were you feeling like you didn't have enough resources to accomplish your mission?
I think the resourcing problem was an ongoing one. We recognized, as I noted, we were the economy-of-force theater, which means our goal was to maximize the impact of the capabilities that we had. My force levels during the nineteen months I was there, I was able to increase them from fourteen thousand to twenty-one thousand, so I did have a significant bump up, primarily focused on the Afghan presidential election in two thousand and four. But even that was a fragment of the total numbers in Iraq. That said, I actually thought the light footprint from a military standpoint during my time there was the right solution, given the nature of the Afghan people, and as we heard in some of the earlier testimony today, the perpetual affronts that were possible between military interaction with Afghan civilians, having fewer troops made that less likely, and we actually put some measures in place to mitigate that even further. So resource is never enough, but I wasn't concerned. My goal wasn't to replicate the numbers in Iraq, and I thought I had broadly about enough, just enough, to do my job when I was there.
I've got about a minute left, but on the escape valve, I think I remember this very well. Did we have a good enough strategy? It seems like it was a little bit diplomacy. It was a little bit always going to the top general that was the head of ISI and trying to convince him to crack down in the Fatah. Is there anything that we should have done to crack down better on that safe, external safe haven?
I think ultimately that had to be a conversation with Pakistan. And I think during my time, I thought we made some progress with that. We actually got the Pakistani army to go into the tribal areas and have a pretty big fight in the spring of oh-four. They took a lot of casualties, which was something they had never done before, had never been in those areas before in their history. That did not sustain itself in the years to come, and I think that was a shortfall, and it now allowed that sanctuary to become even deeper and more developed than it was during the time I was there.
Thank you. I yield back.
Commissioner Ashley, you have the floor.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thanks for being with us today. Thanks for your service. General Borno, thanks for reminding everybody that what we do when we put on the cloth of our nation is family business. So thanks for your children's service, your sons. My question is for General Stalder. Can you talk a little bit about the challenges from an intelligence perspective in terms of the quantity and the quality of an intelligence that you had as you had to plan the counterterrorism strategy as it emerged in context of al-Qaeda, the Taliban, Afghanistan, and by extension into Pakistan, into the Fatah?
The intelligence that I saw was initially pretty sparse. In the early days of it, the CIA operations team that we had contact with was clearly a source. We got literally a few special forces into the northern part of the country early. They were our most reliable source. There was an outreach we did to friendly regional nations to help them tell us what they knew about al-Qaeda primarily. That was our primary interest, obviously, in the beginning. And so it was a very intensive effort of piecing together disparate fragments of understandings and information from all the sources that we could find and put together. And so that's my memory of the very early days. And then, of course, from that, you have to make sense of what do you do with it? And then how do you then do it? And so much of the demand in the early days into that rather fragmented intel system was focused on trying to determine the whereabouts of Osama bin Laden, of course. So that's my memory of it, and I hope that answers your question to some degree.
Yeah, General, could you talk about what were some of your best sources of intelligence in the early days of the conflict?
It was our special forces folks. Once they got into country and we had communications with them, they were unquestionably our best eyes on sources of understanding about what was going on in the country.
All right, thank you. I yield back.
Commissioner Crocker, you are recognized.
Thank you, and thank you to both our witnesses for your extraordinary service to our nation, not just with respect to Afghanistan, but throughout your distinguished careers. We all owe you a debt. General Stalder, if I could take you back to Operation Anaconda in early March of 2002, that was the first major operation conducted with a division-level headquarters in-country. Looking back on it, how would you assess the effectiveness of that operation? How well was it resourced? How good was the intelligence? What might have been done differently? Thank you.
That's a great question, Ambassador. And I hope I don't give you too long of an answer. It was, it needed more time, frankly, to be planned and integrated and carried out. As you know, the 10th Mountain Division was coming into K-2 at the time. Prior to that, the effort in-country was by and large a special forces effort, excuse me, supported by Joint Force Air Power. And the introduction of 10th Mountain Division was exactly what needed to be done for the campaign, but that transition was not particularly well-coordinated, integrated, or planned, in my opinion, and really imposed some challenges by the forces on the ground to execute in that matter. And so my work in that area identified a number of classified findings, which I shared with General Franks prior to leaving CENTCOM. As I recall, my overall finding was the rushed nature of it and the lack of integration between all the forces involved from U.S. Central Command, and they were just not really set up to do that. And so it was a mixed success, Ambassador. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much. General Borno, I was very struck by the direction you received from General Abidzade to seek to reintegrate lower-level former Taliban. To what extent were you successful in that endeavor? And was it the subject of cooperation or coordination with the embassy?
I think I did a very limited amount of actions, and this would have to have been integrated with the embassy to do the lower-level Taliban integration. I think that I didn't have any active programs in the military to do that. That fell into the political domain. We heard a number of observations out earlier today, and I think those accurately portrayed how much conflict there was in terms of how people were looking at that in the Pentagon and the White House and now Security Council, even in the embassy. I think broadly, the general policy outlook was that would have to be a major decision back in Washington, and that decision never got made to actually do that. So we, from an action standpoint at the lower level, that was more of a tacit program than it was any kind of an active program. We were trying to do some of that through the disarmament, demobilization, reintegration program. We looked at that as the primary way that would happen.
Thank you. I yield back.
Commissioner Bash, you are recognized.
Thank you so much, and thank you, General Stalder. Thank you, General Borno, for appearing here today and for your many decades of service to our nation. General Borno, I appreciate the way you described the guidance that you received from General Abidzade. He kind of told you what you should do, if you will. How did you interpret the end state that you were looking to achieve? Was it stabilization of the country in anticipation of the elections? Was it to smash remnants of al-Qaeda? Was it to try to pursue the safe haven across the border? Walk us through a little bit about kind of what you were trying to achieve with those methods that you and General Abidzade discussed.
From that, we developed a, what we call the Five-Pillar Counterinsurgency Strategy. One of the pillars was counterterrorism and continuing to press the fight against al-Qaeda, especially, which we viewed as a primary terrorist threat. Another one was to begin building the Afghan National Army, which we eventually saw as being the primary force against the Taliban. We had a pillar in terms of providing U.S. units ownership of entire territories so that they could manage all of the activities in those arenas, including provincial reconstruction teams. We had a reconstruction pillar, then we had an engage-with-regional-partners pillar. I had four countries in my area of responsibility, not only Afghanistan, but all of Pakistan except for Jammu and Kashmir, and the southern part of Dajikistan, Uzbekistan. So I had some regional responsibilities. I primarily interpreted those as Pakistan, Afghanistan, and spent quite a bit of time doing that. But broadly, in the near term, our near-term objective was ensure the 2004 fall presidential election had adequate security to be successful. So that was our primary focus for my first 12 months there. And then helping all of the other players in the interagency process be successful, whether it be USAID, which we, I was very surprised to hear comments about the military giving direction to USAID. I don't think that was ever my experience because they were an independent organization working through the embassy. But to try and enable all the other players to be successful in helping to build, as one of the speakers noted, the Afghan state, not the nation, which they believed they had a strong national identity, but they had very weak institutions. So we helped to enable that. But our goal was really kind of one year at a time, looking forward, and we had about a three-year plan out there. But the focus initially was to make sure the government was able to stand up and become viewed as legitimate in the eyes of the Afghan people.
Thank you. And with respect to some of the tactical issues that you said were going to be handled out of Bagram, and, General Stalder, you also referenced kind of the 24/7/365 focus on current operations. I'm curious whether or not either of you thought it would have been beneficial, possible, realistic in those early days to obtain more authorization to engage in hot pursuit over the border with Pakistan or to engage in what we later undertook, which were kinetic strikes along the Afghanistan-Pakistan border specifically directed at al-Qaeda leadership that had taken up safe haven? Was that something we were lacking? Was that something that we could have done better early on? Or frankly, the politics of Pakistan would have made it too complex? And both witnesses are invited to comment on that.
Maybe I'll start with that. I don't think the intelligence was there and the capabilities that were present in later years, such as predator strikes. That capability was limited to minimal during the time I was there. So that capability probably wouldn't have been available, even if we had more effective intelligence. Our military units along the border had the authority to always respond back to any fires they received from across the border. They were always allowed to respond to that. We did not generally allow them to go into Pakistan unless there was a, they could get permission to do that if they were asked to do so. So I think we had enough authorities in that region. What we did not have is the intelligence. I felt relatively blind in terms of what I could see was happening in the tribal areas of Pakistan, and that was a big intelligence hole, I think, that we were never able to fill. And then our ability to actually do something about that, other than work through the Pakistanis, was pretty limited during my time.
Thank you. And, General Stalder, we have about 30 seconds left.
I would agree with that, and it was even less developed during the time I was involved. In fact, one of our key challenges relatively early was that the terminal controllers on the ground, who were all special forces folks at that point, were wary of being asked to target disparate tribal folks who just happened to be out of favor with the folks that they happened to be working with at the time. So it was very difficult there, and we didn't want to add to the problem by not really being sure what we were going after. So just reinforcing, General Borno.
Thank you.
Commissioner Feda.
Thank you very much. Thank you, General Stalder and Borno. Dave, good to see you again. It's been a while. Wanted to start by saying I could not agree more with General Stalder's written testimony, paragraph two under Coalition Operations, where he talks about the value of the Allies. I really wanted to be part of this commission for exactly, nearly word-for-word, what you, General Stalder, wrote in your testimony. Thank you for validating the work and the sacrifices of our allies over 20 years, or nearly 20 years, on the ground. Very important contribution you wrote right there, and I appreciate the sentiment. For General Borno, again, reading your testimony and apologies, I had to just briefly step out for something. You identified as one of the key components for what, how we didn't succeed in the war, I'm probably using your word slightly wrong, failure to achieve unity of effort. When it came to COIN, you say that we could have done better, and it's 20% military and 80% other. In your mind, and having listened, I saw that you were here and Administrator Natsios was speaking, how much of what Administrator Natsios said also reflects your views on COIN and where we could have done better?
I will say that much of what he had to say I found surprising because it didn't reflect my experience with USAID in Afghanistan. And again, my period of time there, not uniquely, but distinctively, I think, was marked by having a very close integration with the U.S. Embassy country team. And Ambassador Kalazad, who was ambassador through the vast majority of my time there, and he and I partnered very closely together. I lived on the embassy compound. I went to probably 300 country team meetings while I was there, which is more than any military officer should have to do, right? And those were incredibly valuable, and followed by 300 security corps groups with the head of USAID, with the head of the intelligence there, with the head of the Afghan reconstruction group, a group of, you know, CEOs who were working there with us. And so we had a very integrated country team effort that I very much wanted and put myself as a part of. My office was 20 feet from Ambassador Kalazad's embassy. And so I thought that was, in a lot of ways, we achieved a very high watermark in terms of integration during our time there. However, I also am keenly aware, and I've written a bit about this, that our successors viewed that very differently. My successor immediately moved out of the embassy. He stopped going to country team meetings, certainly his choice. He took all the non-military things out of the campaign plan that we had integrated and built together with the embassy as a unified U.S. campaign plan for counterinsurgency in Afghanistan. And the next ambassador, you know, was very much more of a traditional State Department person. So I think the institutions themselves are not built, as we heard, to do this naturally, and it takes a lot of unnatural effort to make it happen. And we've got to find a better way to make that the norm and at least recognize it's important to find a way to build these teams, get them together, perhaps deploy them together and keep them together for a long time, which we, you know, ultimately failed to do throughout the war.
Just staying with you for a second, then I'd like to ask both of you a closing question, at least during my time. You know, a big part of this commission is not only to understand the facts and to be as objective as possible, but also, as you've heard throughout this morning, to get recommendations. And so I know there's been a lot written on COIN and what we can do differently and better, but I guess I would be curious to hear your thoughts on, I know you just said maybe combining more, but that long reach of Washington? And how much does that really affect trying to do counterinsurgency on the ground?
I thought we actually benefited from having the Iraq War between us and Washington, and that that absorbed so much of their energy, time, and attention, and it was not going well at all during the time I was there, that that spared us a lot of what could have potentially been micromanagement from Washington. And we also had a very powerful ambassador who was not only connected to the Secretary of State, but also knew the President, knew the Vice President, you know, had long-running relationships with the Secretary of Defense. So his ability to cut through a lot of the bureaucracy and shield us from perhaps a lot of unnecessary over-supervision was pretty strong. So that worked better than I expected it to when I went out there, and I thought, again, kind of a salient aspect of that unique period of time with the people involved.
Okay, great, thank you. And now for both of you, and I'll start with General Stalder. I want to bring the Allies back in one more time. And again, the 2080 comment that you make, General Borno, about how COIN should work. Working with the Allies on counterinsurgency, for many politically, it was a tough thing to do. But what's one lesson that we can take away from working with Allies on COIN that we can apply to a future conflict? And again, starting with you, General Stalder.
I think wherever we work with them, speaking from the military perspective, we have to treat them as genuine partners. We have to listen, 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 and include them in our plans and our planning, and be included in their plans and their planning, and continue a very close relationship from the planning phase all the way through the execution. In the case of U.S. forces, many times that will involve, you know, helping them to help us. But that's a north star for counterinsurgency or any kind of successful Allies and partners operation, in my view.
Now briefly, I think political legitimacy that partners give us is incredibly important, maybe as much in some cases the military contributions they can make. I also think we have to be realistic and be very clear with them on understanding what they will and will not do in an insurgency. And as I went back for some of my visits, it was clear we had a tier of Allies and partners who were absolutely there and were willing to fight, and we had another tier that were there to do no more than peacekeeping operations, as we might describe them. Those, therefore, caused us to have to think about putting them in different places and giving them different responsibilities. All Allies and partners are not equal and shouldn't be thought of that way on the battlefield.
Yeah, thank you so much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Jones, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time both the witnesses have spent with the commission so far. I wanted to turn to you, General Borno, and ask you, when, based on your judgment, do you assess the insurgency really began? What timeframe? And what were the key driving factors, as best as you can tell, including reflecting on it, that drove that insurgency?
Yeah, that's tough to put a mark on the calendar on that. I think by the time I arrived in October 2003, I was there for an assessment visit for a week plus the month before. Between that visit and my first month on the ground, it was clear to me there was an insurgency underway, not a robust one, but the beginnings of one, based on security instances, attacks we were seeing happen in different parts of the country. Those weren't just banditry or criminal activity. They were clear evidence that there was the beginnings of an insurgency that had the potential to continue to grow, and we were going to have to fight for the legitimacy And we were going to have to fight for the legitimacy with the Afghan people of which of the two enterprises, the insurgency under the Taliban or the new Afghan government, were going to ultimately have the loyalty of the Afghan people. So I went into it very much with that outlook. Don't know when that would have begun before that, but it was clear sometime probably in '02, certainly by early '03, that that was underway.
And briefly, your sense, as you came into in that period, the causes for that? What was motivating the Taliban and how were they able to operate?
Partly, I think that they never disbanded. They were never defeated. They never, you know, there were never large surrender ceremonies for the Taliban when they went in POW camps, right? So they simply blended back into the population after December 2001. Some went to Pakistan, but many went home and never really put down their weapons. And the ideology and the connections they had and perhaps their lack of representation in the ensuing government may have contributed to this, made, I think, fertile ground for the insurgency to begin again.
Thank you. I wanted to turn to one of your comments in your testimony, which is the lead nation approach. I won't go through all the lead nations, but the Germans took responsibility for the police, the British for counter-narcotics, the U.S. for the army. What is your sense reflecting back on that? How well that actually was implemented on the ground and the challenges faced? How much of that was perhaps a function of, you know, it wasn't a great idea to begin with, or it wasn't resourced sufficiently? What's your sense about the lead nation approach and its implementation?
I think some of the challenges were capacity. Each of those nations brought very different capacity to the table. The bigger challenge, I think, was lack of a mutually agreed-upon direction or strategy for each of those programs. I thought, for example, the DDR program, disarmament, demobilization, reintegration program run by Japan and really strongly overseen by the United Nations, went very well. And I watched, you know, large numbers of Afghan militia forces be demobilized and brought back in, their weaponry taken away. Other programs, I thought, were much less successful, and they were on different azimuths, different directions than we might have liked in some cases. So we fought to get the police program brought under the United States and ultimately were successful in doing that, you know, shortly after I left, because we thought it was so important and it wasn't getting the right kind of direction. And it didn't have the, basically, the right North Star that was aiming towards. It was aiming towards a much more, perhaps, a European police style as opposed to, this is going to be in a wartime police organization. So each one, I think, had a different level. We couldn't have done that necessarily all of ourselves, so it had to be, I think, the idea was a good one, but the execution, I think, fell short in some areas.
So just briefly, last question, I want to pick up on one of Dan's questions earlier. The relationship between you and Ambassador Khalilzad, I think you have said, was a close one. I think as we look towards future cases where we get engaged in a situation like this or might get engaged in a situation like this, what is your sense about the right model for how to run a campaign along these lines? Is it something that has to be done between the ambassador and military commander? Should it be the civilian lead? Should it be something else?
One of the recommendations I made a number of years back was that if we're in a counterinsurgency campaign that's ongoing, let's say, what we need to do is pick a commander and an ambassador, give them small staffs, put them in Washington, D.C. together for three months, and make sure they can get along together, develop a joint coherent strategy that's blessed by state and defense and the other players. Then when that's all packaged up, send them to the country we're fighting in and send them there for three years at least, and keep them together. And if it doesn't work, you know, change them out. But don't randomly assign people based upon the algorithm at the time or the personnel model and hope that it works when they arrive in country and we find out they don't like each other, or they don't work well together, or they have completely opposite philosophies on how the war should be fought. We did quite a bit of that over 20 years, and I think there's better ways to do that than what we experienced.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will give myself five minutes for a question directed at General Borno. My question looks both backwards and forwards. So can you talk about the readiness challenges that you observed in the armed services when you went out to Afghanistan in terms of what was needed on the ground for preparation and what we were lacking? And then also talk about what we did bring to the situation. And related to that, looking forward, you shared with us that you teach a course at Johns Hopkins SIS on the human face of war. And I'd like to ask for your advice for this commission on what are your conversations like in the present day with this next generation of leaders that you teach about, you know, how do they see war? How do they see the challenges of being American in the world after fighting two big wars for, in the past century? Give us the human side of the experience of your students, if you will, because for us, that's going to be extremely instructive as we write our report. We hope that this report will sit on the shelves of high school classrooms and college classrooms and be available to everyone who wants to learn. So in that spirit, please, sir, go ahead.
If I understand the readiness question, I think one of the challenges we had, certainly during my era, is that we had units arriving in Afghanistan that had no idea what counterinsurgency was. There was no doctrine for counterinsurgency at the time. The military didn't publish doctrine until after I left Afghanistan on updating what they had had during the Vietnam War. And so there was a huge gap in terms of what's this environment they're going into. And our units actually adapted quite well. I write in a couple of my articles that their solution, when I talked to one of the battalion commanders on how they switched to counterinsurgency, was booksamillion.com, which was the predecessor of Amazon. They were ordering books from the United States to be shipped into Afghanistan on counterinsurgency and reading them in the field and teaching their people how to do these things when they came in with a very different understanding of what they might have to do. So over the course of the war, our units got much better at that. We developed doctrine, we started doing training before people came, but that was all very much, quite a bit later than the time I was there. So it was a huge challenge, I think, at the front end. To your second question on the human face of battle, we've, my colleague, Dr. Nora Benshaw, and I have been teaching this course for about 10 years now. And in the first few years we taught it, we were getting people, in some cases literally weeks from Afghanistan in combat, arriving to take a course on the human face of battle and getting lessons on the impact of killing, the impact of dealing with casualties in units, you know, duty, heroism, and fear, and what that means, small unit leadership. And it was an incredible experience watching them process their own experience in Afghanistan and Iraq in the classroom, talking about it afterwards. In the last several years, those people have all aged out of the force. And so now the students we have, we have still a number of military students as well as many civilian students, which is why we taught the course. Our military students, for the most part, haven't deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan. And this is all new to them. And we look at, you know, not just the recent wars, but we go back in World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and the experience mostly of combat on the ground. And they're very fascinated by that because they're looking to their future and the possibility of having to fight a major power war sometime down the road and what that might look like. And they'll be wrestling with a lot of these same issues probably on a much bigger scale, God forbid, if it comes to that. But I think that the generation in the military that served today is, you know, as astute and as engaged and as committed to, you know, being able to be ready to go out and fight those wars if they have to, as their predecessors were who fought the wars here in Afghanistan in the last 20 years. Last point on that, I think, is that those that did fight in Iraq and Afghanistan, particularly perhaps in Afghanistan, they have, many of them, I think, have a profound sense of lack of resolution of that war. They don't feel like there's been closure on their experience based on what happened and how we left in 2021. So I think the commission's work in that area, there's a number of them that are very interested in that, are keen to hear that that's happening, because they never, you know, they came from the military, at least, and, you know, the Army and Marines had a very strong culture of looking back and doing an after-action review of what happened and why it happened and what we can learn from that. And most of them, I think, correctly feel that simply hasn't been done in the military, and they want to find a way to get that closure. So I hope that the commission will help contribute to that for them, and I hope our course helps with that for them as well.
Thank you, sir. I'll give the floor to Co-Chair Jackson for a question.
This question's for General Stalder. In your testimony, you referred to the disconnect between your view of what would be required to build an Afghan national security force and the opinions that prevailed in the OSD staff at the time. I'm curious if you could expand on this a bit. You argued that it would take a decade, it would be more costly, that special forces couldn't do it alone. What do you think right would have looked like at that point in time? What kind of Army and police force did Afghanistan need in your estimation? And what would have been involved in turning that into a reality?
I think the planning to do that and to appreciate the current conditions in Afghanistan would have done a great deal to improve the success of the effort and frankly, would have been valuable for all of the folks who were involved in the process to understand. One of the earlier panelists pointed out something very articulately in terms of perceptions in Washington and elsewhere about what sort of institutions and challenges there were in Afghanistan, were wildly overestimating the raw material of young men, for example, who might become part of an Afghan national security force, their level of literacy, the social cohesion, and all of the things that go into the raw material for creating an Afghan national security force that's genuinely effective, and a police force that's genuinely effective, loyal to the community, and acting for the greater good as opposed to a tribal or even family loyalty. And so that, those baseline understandings, although we did our best to communicate them through the various bureaucratic channels, did not seem to be resonating or certainly did not seem to be in favor, because it was going to be long, expensive, and challenging if you do it right, but it'll be worth it. And so to answer the basic question, you know, that baseline understanding is the critical starting point for that kind of an effort. And in my experience, we did not achieve it. I left in the summer of '02. Maybe other efforts occurred after my departure to bring that mutual realization to those involved, but I did not see it up to the time that I left. So that's a critical element. And in terms of what right would look like for a re-attempt, I would start with that. What are the current conditions and where do we want to go? Begin with the end in mind. I hope that answered the question.
Thank you very much, General Borno and General Stalder. We very much appreciate your time today. As we close out the hearing, I'd like to offer some concluding observations and ask Co-Chair Jackson to do so as well. What I found striking about today is the connective tissue between the three panels on the challenges faced by the institutions in that the war exposed longstanding kind of dependencies and practices in the institutions and agencies and departments that preexisted going into Afghanistan. And wartime often exacerbated those kind of issues and challenges. And so it begs the question of, when we look at Afghanistan, we have to ask if the same issues will unfold elsewhere in completely different terrain and environments, because it's not about them, it's actually about us. And this is a line of questioning that we will continue to interrogate so that we can better dissect kind of what actually happened in Afghanistan that was specific to the ground and what was specific to Washington. Secondly, what's clear today and has been clear to us for some time is the connective tissue between the Iraq and Afghanistan campaigns. We're often told that this is an artificial comparison. We also are, we also see in some communities that they jump to the conclusion. What we'd like to do on the commission is to kind of address all of the assumptions in a very analytical way so we can understand specifically what were the pressures on the force? What were the pressures on the diplomats, the aid workers, that specifically pulled their attention from one theater to the next? We will also do this with the folks that were making those decisions. And that's not something that we were able to discuss in detail today, but we will continue to do that throughout the course of our work. And just a final point on what wasn't discussed today. There was a good bit that happened in the eight years that we talked about today that, you know, we didn't discuss and we didn't give it the attention it deserves. For example, the decision, the actual decision to invade, how did that go? Who was involved? Who was in the room? Our work will definitely look at this and hopefully have a public discussion about it at a future time. We know that the hunt for bin Laden evolved during these eight years. And we mentioned that intelligence was not great in the first few years, but intelligence got real good after a while. And what did that mean for the hunt for bin Laden? So that's another area that we will continue to interrogate. And the very important development questions that Professor Natsios and others spoke about with great examples, there's bigger questions about the systems of development and best practices that we have to devote our time to, and we will be looking at those in the near future as well. So there's lots more to talk about. Please don't leave disappointed that we didn't cover everything. That was not our goal, but we did have a very rich discussion, both with our former colleagues and our Afghan partners and friends. And for that, we're deeply grateful. Colin, over to you for some closing remarks.
Thank you, Shmila. Quickly and not comprehensively, I have three observations. The first is, I think many of us who have worked in government assume that if a problem is important, the answer's got to be adding more of something, more bodies, more time, more money. And yet I thought we heard at various points in this discussion, the counterargument, which is maybe less is more in certain of these instances, whether it's in the development frame or U.S. military frame. So this argument between more is more and less is more will be one that we'll continue to struggle with. Second, I think Andrew Natsios brought out this interesting tension between the pressure to build things, schools, roads, wells, infrastructure projects, and, on the other hand, the difficulty of building institutions. I certainly come away from my personal experience and the comments made today with the sense that building institutions is monumentally slow and difficult, and it's awfully hard to know if you're doing a good job or not. And that piece of it, in the context of nation building, I think will be important for the project. Finally, we talked a lot about reconciliation opportunities with the Taliban early in the conflict. I certainly embarked on this project thinking that this was a relatively narrow question about what was possible at BON or around BON. And the more we talk about it, I'm seized with the notion that this is a basket of opportunities and we need to be very precise about what we're asking. What types of reconciliation were possible? What would the terms of that reconciliation have looked like? What impact would that have had on the stability or instability of Afghanistan? And today was proof positive that answering those important questions can only be done by interacting with Afghans. They have given us the important precision about what was possible, what was not possible, when these opportunities manifested themselves. So I think this is, you know, another plea for us to include our Afghan partners in ways that sometimes we did during the war, but sometimes we ignored.
Thank you, Colin, and thank you to our esteemed commissioners for your wisdoms and your participation today. General Borno, you are dismissed as well. And thank you to the audience. This hearing is now adjourned.
Good morning. This hearing will now come to order. Welcome, everyone. I'm Shmila Choudhury, the co-chair of the Afghanistan War Commission. I'm joined today by my co-chair and friend, Dr. Colin Jackson. And on behalf of all of our fellow commissioners joining us today, I welcome you to our second public hearing. We have an ambitious lineup today, and I'm so glad that we have guests and colleagues and friends, as well as our nine witnesses from three panels we're hosting today. So, I'd like to begin the conversation today with a question that sounds very simple, but is quite complicated. Do we, as a society, truly understand what it means to go to war? War is no doubt familiar to the American experience, but it is also a compartmentalized one. In just this century, we have waged two wars abroad, in Iraq and Afghanistan. These wars have been debated, justified, and criticized. We've held parades and vigils. We've invoked sacrifice and strategy in the same breath. But through it all, the wars of this century have remained strangely distant for many Americans who did not have a personal connection to the conflict, close enough to register, but not close enough to change much. We've all seen the images of burning vehicles and soldiers patrolling, civilians fleeing. But these became background noise for a country that never fully grappled with what war demands, not just of those who fight, but also of those who have to decide. Even in Afghanistan and Iraq, where so many Americans repeatedly served during the 20 years, the wars touched only a small segment of the total population. The rest of us were spectators, not participants. So, the question stands, and I want us to really think about this today, not just whether we understand what it means to go to war, but whether we're willing to understand what it does to us over time. Today's hearing focuses on the early years of the U.S. war in Afghanistan. We'll be looking at the time period between 2001 and 2009. It's a period that we've all described with a lot of confidence, the fall of the Taliban, the pursuit of al-Qaeda, the ambition of rebuilding a nation. But that confidence masks something far more complicated, and we want to get into that complexity today. The shift from counterterrorism to state-building to counterinsurgency, for example, was not preordained. It was the product of choices, some deliberate, some reactive. It happened in real time, under pressure, with limited debate, and even less dissent. Nor was the Taliban insurgency inevitable. So, we're asking ourselves today, what guided those choices? Whose voices shaped them? And whose were excluded? Were our goals aligned with our capabilities? Were U.S. goals aligned with Afghan goals? Did our leaders fully understand the complexity of Afghan society? Or did they treat it as a blank slate? How did early military and diplomatic decisions limit or enable future options? And how honest were we, publicly and internally, about the costs and contradictions of what we were attempting? These aren't just technical or tactical questions. They're questions of civic trust, of institutional responsibility, of how democratic societies account for what they ask others to do in their name. Over the last year and a half, the Commission has heard from hundreds of people, cabinet officials, ambassadors, service members, and aid workers. Their reflections have all been candid, at times very uncomfortable and often deeply moving. They've reminded us that war is not a distraction. It is a lived experience. It is felt and remembered, and it goes on. It marks people in different ways, and it doesn't end when the troops come home. This hearing and our Commission's broader mandate is not about litigating the past, it's about learning from it. That requires intellectual honesty, moral clarity, and a willingness to sit with ambiguity. We all know that Afghanistan defies neat conclusions. It always has. But that does not absolve us from the work of understanding it. If we fail to account for what happened in Afghanistan, we risk turning war into an abstraction. As we begin today, I want to recognize the extraordinary work of the Commission staff, the people behind the scenes who have brought rigor, empathy, and discipline to this effort. I'd like to especially call out my colleagues, Matt Gobush and Kate Bateman and Jamie Cheshire, for managing the whole team and process for more than just today, for several weeks. So, I want to make sure we give kudos to the team that has brought us here today. And their work is ongoing. It will continue for the next year and a half until we publish our final report. And I want to thank today's panelists for lending their voices to this critical conversation. With your eyewitness testimony and with testimony from so many other senior officials we're interviewing, the Commission can help narrate this opening chapter of the war and those that follow to help make the experience of going to war more real and understandable for future generations. With that, I'll turn things over to my co-chair, Dr. Colin Jackson.
I want to extend my sincere thanks to my co-chair, friend, and colleague, Shmila Choudhury, without whom I would be lost in this great endeavor. I'd also like to thank my fellow commissioners and the Afghanistan War Commission staff. As Shmila has said, they're the ones who have made this event and the work of the Commission possible. And as I've told all of our witnesses in our earlier sessions, we could not come to an accurate and comprehensive account of the 20-year U.S. engagement in Afghanistan without their candid collaboration in this work. I want to underscore that the Afghanistan War Commission is at its core an exercise in learning. We seek to record the history of the war, explain the key decisions at multiple levels, and understand the relationship between those decisions, their implementation, and the course of the war. But all of this is in the service of deriving insights and improving the performance of the U.S. government in some future and as-yet unknown contingency. The scale of the American investment in Afghanistan, the more than 800,000 who served in uniform, the 21,000 who were wounded, the 2,238 who died, the vast sum spent on the war, not to mention the prestige forfeited in the outcome, makes our effort to distill and apply the lessons of Afghanistan a necessary and a solemn obligation. We seek, as a Commission, to understand three kinds of things. In light of the outcome, the natural instinct is to ask, what did we do wrong, or poorly, at least in retrospect? The study of failure is a necessary step. But it is equally important to identify the things we did well or that we did better at the end than at the beginning. Finally, we must identify the plausible alternatives that existed at critical junctures in the war. In exploring the paths not taken, we must be prepared to ask what pursuing such alternatives would have required of decision-makers and the U.S. government as a whole. All this seems straightforward and desirable, but we should be mindful of how difficult it is to derive accurate foresight from hindsight. As one of my colleagues, William Fuller, observed, "A military lesson has two components, an interpretation of the nature and outcome of a previous war, and an explicit or implicit prophecy about the nature and outcome of the next one." In any war, and Afghanistan is no exception, it is easy to misunderstand the nature of cause and effect and the weights we should assign to a variety of factors. Even if we succeed in understanding cause and effect in Afghanistan, there is a substantial risk that the relationships that held there will not apply in some future different case. As we have done outreach and interviews for this project, the issue of accountability has emerged again and again. As military officers, many of us were taught a very strict ethical standard. The leader of a unit is responsible for everything his or her unit does or fails to do. The appeal of this approach is simple, understandable, and visceral. We on the Afghanistan War Commission are committed to an unflinching examination of the key decisions of the war. But a narrow focus on personal accountability has profound limitations. The Afghanistan war, like all wars, was a team endeavor. It spanned 20 years, four administrations, countless military commanders, ambassadors, station chiefs, and aid administrators. Assigning blame to any individual or individuals ignores the complexity of U.S. decision-making and the tenuousness of the connection between particular decisions and outcomes in war and state-building. Even if we could identify individuals who failed, the assignment of blame would not change the outcome. It would not bring back the fallen. It would not make their sacrifice any more or less meaningful. It would not recoup the billions of dollars spent in the cause. And most important, it would not improve the performance of the U.S. government in a future contingency. This is why the Commission has chosen to search for accountability through learning. If we can identify the things we did well, the things we did poorly, and preserve and transmit those lessons to a future generation of Americans, we may be able to make that future generation better prepared to confront similar but not identical problems. This act lends new meaning to the service and sacrifice of countless Americans. It is the gift that one generation of public servants can make to their descendants in the military, the foreign service, the intelligence services, and development organizations. Today's hearing focuses on one of the least understood but most significant phases of the Afghanistan war. As you will hear today, many of the decisions made in the early years, indeed in the first two years of the war, established the framework within which succeeding leaders operated. Early decisions made at a time when our freedom of action was greatest, but our understanding of the problem was at its minimum, narrowed the range of decisions for the leaders who followed. A second theme you will hear today echoes Robert Comer's memorable explanation of U.S. failure in Vietnam, bureaucracy does its thing. In Afghanistan, as in Vietnam, war was a team sport at every level. Much as we may seek to reduce the war and its key decisions to accounts of individual success or failure, the war in Afghanistan was the product of interaction between multiple departments and agencies. In some instances, that collaboration was effective and mutually reinforcing. In other instances, the well-intentioned efforts of a department or agency often collided with or undercut the initiatives of other departments and agencies. A third theme today will be the centrality of Afghan perspectives and Afghan decisions to any comprehensive account of the war. If the U.S. engagement in Afghanistan had been an engineering project, then all we would need to consider would be the U.S. decisions and their implementation. But in truth, these decisions were met with reactions from our partners and our adversaries. Today, we have asked two former senior officials of the Afghan government to provide their candid perspectives on U.S. decision-making and their insights into the Afghan decisions that flowed from them. Only by understanding the interaction of U.S. and Afghan decision-making are we likely to understand the connections between our designs and outcomes.
Thank you, Co-Chair Jackson. We'll now begin our first panel. This panel examines the foundational period of the U.S. war in Afghanistan, beginning with the removal of the Taliban regime and the pursuit of counterterrorism objectives in the aftermath of 9/11. We will address how early policy choices made in Washington, shaped by urgency, ideology, and institutional constraint, translated into operational realities on the ground. Central to this discussion is an assessment of the Bush administration's strategic calculus toward Afghanistan, particularly as attention and resources shifted toward the war in Iraq. The conversation will also engage with the critical role of Pakistan in shaping the trajectory of the conflict and how regional dynamics complicated U.S. efforts and altered the conflict's outcomes. I'll now ask Dr. Jackson to introduce the witnesses.
Our first witness is Ambassador Hank Crumpton, a graduate of the University of New Mexico and Johns Hopkins School of Advanced International Studies. Ambassador Crumpton started his career with 24 years in the CIA's clandestine service, operating mostly in the foreign field, including tours as chiefs of station. He led the CIA's Afghanistan campaign from 2001 to 2002, for which he received the CIA's highest award for achievement, the Distinguished Intelligence Medal. In 2005, President George W. Bush appointed him ambassador-at-large and U.S. coordinator for counterterrorism. He is the author of the New York Times bestseller, "The Art of Intelligence." And since 2008, he has served as founder and chairman of advisory firm Crumpton Global. Our next witness is Colonel Anthony Tony Harriman, who served in the United States Army for 27 years, including deployments to Germany, Kuwait, Egypt, Bosnia, and other venues. From late 2002 through August 2003, he led the Joint Staff Office that prepared orders to deploy units to Afghanistan and Iraq. He left the Joint Staff for assignment to the National Security Council, serving as director for Afghanistan from 2003 to 2005 during the Bush administration, and then as senior director for Afghanistan from 2005 to 2007, finally as special advisor for policy implementation, 2007 to 2009. He holds a BS from West Point, an MA in English from the University of Virginia, and a master's in National Security and Strategic Studies from the National War College. And our third witness, Ambassador Nancy Jo Powell, is a retired ambassador from the U.S. Foreign Service. She served 37 years in the Department of State. During her tenure, she held the highest rank in the U.S. Foreign Service with the title of career ambassador. In addition to serving as ambassador to Pakistan early in the war, her senior positions included ambassador to Uganda, Ghana, Nepal, and India, as well as director general of the Foreign Service, national intelligence officer for South Asia at the National Intelligence Council, and the State Department's senior coordinator for avian influenza. She's also the recipient of the U.S. State Department Arnold Raffel Award. I yield back.
Thank you. Ambassador Crumpton, you are recognized for your opening statement.
Co-chairs and commissioners, thank you for inviting me to testify. America as a nation went to war in September of 2001. For many of us, however, the war began years earlier. In 1996, al-Qaeda declared war against the U.S. CIA Director George Tenet issued his own declaration and began marshaling resources to fight al-Qaeda. The bombings of our embassies in Kenya and Tanzania in 1998, the thwarted worldwide millennium attacks, and the USS Cole in 2000 underscored the enemy's intent and capability. Yet, the tepid U.S. response only encouraged al-Qaeda. Within days of 9/11, I was tasked to organize and lead the CIA's response in Afghanistan. This included both the intelligence collection mission and the execution of the president's unprecedented, extraordinary covert action authority, placing the CIA at the forefront of the war effort. Why CIA? Because we were ready. In September of 1999, the CIA began sending teams into Afghanistan to build our Afghan alliances and collect intelligence. We earned the cooperation of neighboring countries. We developed contingency plans for bold action pending greater covert action authority and resources that never came, until after 9/11. Within 16 days of the attack, the first CIA Team Jawbreaker landed in Afghanistan. The next team, Alpha, dropped into a patch of allied Afghan territory surrounded by the enemy. U.S. Special Forces would soon follow, and future teams would be joint CIA Special Forces. We rapidly integrated deep all-source intelligence, lethal covert action, including propaganda, subversion, sabotage, and direct action, complementing the vast, complex, and precise military operations unleashed across the country, military operations informed by our intelligence. In the first 90 days after 9/11, CIA CENTCOM, SOCOM, JSOC, all acting in concert with our Afghan allies, overwhelmed the enemy throughout the country. During the peak of combat, only 110 CIA officers, scores of JSOC operatives, and approximately 300 Special Forces were on the ground. Many have labeled our campaign an invasion, but it was not. Our local allies invited our help, but make no mistake, they did most of the fighting and dying. Our role was to provide intelligence, coordination, firepower— Our role was to provide intelligence, coordination, firepower, and constant leadership intervention to keep our allies synchronized. With this network coalition, we killed thousands of enemy combatants, many of them the foreign invader. By early December 2001, we had routed our foe. Several key factors contributed to this rapid success. First, intelligence. Our integrated all-source capabilities combined human reporting with technical tools, Predator Signals intelligence, GIS mapping, and real-time dissemination to customers including DoD, state, treasury, and law enforcement, and of course, the president. We produced thousands of intelligence reports from the tactical to the strategic. Second, speed and precision. Urgency with the WMD threat looming was paramount. With a network, flat command structure, and a compressed kill chain, we merged sensors and shooters across all the domains of war—land, sea, airspace, and cyberspace. Often, after attending a meeting with President Bush and Director Tenet in minutes, I would communicate the commander's intent directly to our Team Leaders in Afghanistan. Third, our allies. Afghan partners were essential, as were NATO allies, but also others, including Australia, Uzbekistan, Jordan, Pakistan, UAE. Their varied contributions with intelligence, logistics, combat, and diplomacy were indispensable. Fourth, leadership. The stalwart support from President Bush, Director Tenet, Cofer Black was indispensable. Our Team Leaders, including two officers who earned the CIA's highest award for valor, demonstrated the best of the Agency and the Nation. While we faced challenges with DoD leadership, our partnership with CENTCOM and SOCOM, JSOC, were superb. Rock-solid leaders like General Franks, General Daley, General Winuar, Admiral Callan, Colonel Mulholland, General John Soup Campbell, General Gary Mike Jones, and Colonel Ben Clark personified this collaboration. I should also recognize our partner, Ahmed Shah Masood, the visionary Afghan warrior and leader whom Al Qaeda assassinated two days prior to 9/11. Fifth, knowing how to win. We developed a clear picture of victory in Afghanistan and fought with a ruthless, unrelenting determination to destroy our enemy. We waited for nobody. We took great risk. We embraced the responsibility. To this end, we exerted power across a broad spectrum—kinetic strikes, coercion, bribes, diplomacy, and critically, respect for Afghan dignity and honor. This multi-layered dynamic approach was essential to the success. In the aftermath, from 2002 until 2005, Afghanistan experienced a remarkable degree of relative stability and peace. Yet, we would fail to win the peace. As Washington pivoted toward Iraq, political and military focus and resources shifted. The failure to eliminate Al Qaeda leadership, deny enemy safe haven in Pakistan, and address the issues exploited by the enemy would lead to ultimate U.S. defeat. At what cost? Almost 2,500 U.S. servicemen and perhaps 8,000 military contractors died. More than 1,200 NATO and coalition allies lost their lives. The most? The U.K., followed by Canada. The most per capita? Denmark. There's also the staggering economic asymmetry. The enemy spent half a million dollars on 9/11, and we spent trillions in response. An ethos of victory, clarity, and discipline in mission, empowered leadership, a field bias, superb intelligence, and trusted partnerships bound by dignity and honor drove our early success. Abandoning these principles led to diminished returns and ultimately, ignominious failure. We must learn these hard and bloody lessons. We owe that to our country and to all those who sacrificed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Crumpton. Colonel Harriman, you are recognized for your testimony.
Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I feel honored you asked me to join you today. In September 2003, I left the Pentagon to join the Office for Strategic Planning in Southwest Asia at the National Security Council under National Security Advisor Condoleezza Rice and Deputy National Security Advisor Steve Hadley. The office owned a gutted workspace, too few desks and a sofa already spoken for. It was a startup. Ambassador Bob Blackwill led the Office as Deputy Assistant to the President and Coordinator for Strategic Planning to the National Security Advisor. Agencies had been active in Afghanistan. The Afghanistan Interagency Operation Group was operating. The group existed to design an overall strategy to advance United States interests in Afghanistan and coordinate implementation. The Colonel that would become the Provincial Reconstruction Teams existed. Still, the sense in Washington was nothing had been done. The NSC organized itself for war by making my new office. The Department of Defense sent Special Advisor for Afghanistan Mehran Stramecki to Kabul to figure out what the United States needed to do. Stramecki returned with a long-to-do list—make strategies for dealing with warlords, disarmament, building the army and police, reconciliation, counter-narcotics, power, and all aspects of governance. Deputy NSA Steve Hadley took on this Stramecki list. Twice weekly, he chaired deputies committees, agencies, ready or not. Strategies moved from not done to done over a few months. For example, just after the Constitutional Lawyer Jurka in late 2003, the United States decided on its reconciliation strategy. We would support release of low-level Taliban willing to reconcile with the Afghan government. And President Bush led by committing the United States to accomplish a significant nation-building goal. "The Ring Road will finish in a year," he said. With relentless optimism, we named our new strategies Accelerating Success. National Security Advisor Rice asked for metrics. Troops trained and schools built came easy. Trained troops actually in the Army and schools in use were numbers harder to come by. The AOIGI co-chaired, coordinated implementation. For example, our interagency group rejected an idea to pull helicopters provided the Afghan National Army and Afghan police under the Afghan Army. The police would have lost out. And we managed agency anxieties. For example, the Department of Defense wanted more provincial reconstruction teams, but refused to explain to the deputies committee what the PRTs would do, because by doing so, the department risked committing itself to do more than it had the resources to do. It was a problem. We convinced Defense to prepare a paper modeled on a mutual fund perspective. The paper listed the broad development authorities each PRT commander would have. Rather than list what PRT commanders might do in the future, the paper listed what existing PRT did last year. The deputies committee approved. During a visit to Embassy Kabul, an economic counselor asked me what he would do with a retired Continental Airlines exec who appeared on his turf. "Let him do airplanes," I said. He should have welcomed the help. We should have and did mobilize talent from domestic agencies and the private sector to augment Embassy Kabul. Some voiced the idea that people working in humanitarian fields, academics and the like, should not support the military. I disagree. Prevailing in a counterinsurgency requires employing people with skills of all kinds and securing their work. The PRT embodies a useful concept that we should employ at all levels, high and low. It harnesses all our elements of power, not just our military power. Military operations enable nation buildings. Poor intelligence damages nation building. When we bomb a wedding party by mistake, local people do not look skyward and say, "Forgive them, for they know not what they do." Rather, they gather what remains of those who they love and hate—us. We did not invest sufficient resources to know who we targeted. In 2007, the Army fielded human terrain teams to PRTs to improve decision-making. In 2008, my colleague Dr. Mary Haybeck and I went to Langley to argue that the Agency should devote more analytic resources to understanding Afghanistan's complex humanity. We should have invested in human terrain intelligence in 2001. Security, how to get it, how to measure whether or not we had it, were enduring problems. The International Security Assistance Force had only 20,000 troops in a nation of some 30 million people. Many were committed to sealing Afghanistan's eastern border, thus unavailable for tasks elsewhere. Low force levels gave the Taliban an opportunity to become more active in 2005 and 2006. In 2006, British ISF found the cost in forces to maintain a platoon in Musakala, a Helmand Province district center, too high. To reduce costs on both sides, the British agreed with the Taliban to leave the town in control of local elders. The same year, severity of attacks in Kandahar led Canada to deploy Leopard tanks. Worried, my State Department co-chair John Gastright and I led the AIOG in conducting an Afghanistan strategic review. It recommended a forces surge. Deputy National Security Advisor for Iraq and Afghanistan Megan O'Sullivan passed it to President Bush on November 13, 2006. On February 15, 2007, President Bush announced, "We've extended the stay of 3,200 troops now in country for four months, and we will deploy a replacement force that will sustain this increase for the foreseeable future." The forces did not appear. Ambassador Newman and I arranged a National Security Council meeting to discuss force levels in Afghanistan. After some discussion, Secretary of Defense Gates asked the president to meet him at the Pentagon. The Department of Defense needed—we needed—the forces in Iraq.
Thank you, Colonel Harriman. Ambassador Powell, you are recognized for your testimony.
Good morning, and thank you for including me this morning. As stated, my name is Nancy Powell. I'm a retired career member of the Foreign Service. I served as the American Ambassador to Pakistan from June 2002 to November 2004. I also served in Pakistan as a political officer from 1987 to 1990, where my portfolio included monitoring Pakistani internal political developments and India-Pakistan relations. My other ambassadorial assignments included Uganda, Ghana, Nepal, and India. I want to use this opportunity to focus on the actions of the U.S. mission in Pakistan in support of U.S. goals in the region and on the Pakistani goals. I took up my post in June 2002 after a direct transfer from Ghana. During my very brief Washington consultations, it was emphasized that the mission to Pakistan needed to prioritize work to defuse tensions between nuclear powers India and Pakistan, to engage Pakistan in the global war on terror, and to secure Pakistan's cooperation in support of U.S. troops in Afghanistan. I was also expected to stabilize the embassy platform that had been traumatized by two evacuations, the bombing deaths of two family members, by the departure of the ambassador and deputy chief of mission, and by the demands of more than 5,000 visitors and temporary duty personnel after 9/11. During my tenure, the mission, supported by Washington, particularly Secretary Powell and Deputy Secretary Armitage, advanced these goals. Deputy Secretary Armitage negotiated an agreement in early June 2002 for the disengagement of 1 million Pakistani and Indian soldiers on their common border. Mission elements supported Pakistani President Musharraf's ANTrAC II efforts to encourage diplomatic and non-government confidence-building measures and solutions to Kashmir and other outstanding bilateral issues. Nonproliferation efforts included U.S.-Pakistan discussions of nuclear safety and the house arrest of Pakistan's preeminent nuclear scientist AQ Khan for proliferation activities. Enhanced cooperation with Pakistan's law enforcement and intelligence services resulted in the arrest by Pakistanis of Khalid Sheikh Mohammed and other Al Qaeda personnel. Arrangements were negotiated for the use of the Karachi Port and land routes for resupply of American forces in Afghanistan. Training was provided to enhance Pakistan's ability to control its frontier province and border with Afghanistan, but effective actions against infiltration by AQ and Taliban remain problematic. The mission also managed the return of USAID to Pakistan and the re-establishment of a robust military assistance program. Both have been suspended after Pakistan's nuclear test and Musharraf's coup. Based on their public statements, U.S. government analyses, and our direct talks with Pakistani leaders, we believe that Pakistan's traditional policy and actions concerning Afghanistan centered on three principal objectives: to avoid creating anti-government activity by tribal groups which existed on both sides of the border; to minimize Indian influence and activities in Afghanistan; and to have a pro-Pakistan regime in Kabul to avoid a two-front war and to provide for strategic depth should an Indian attack succeed along the eastern border. In the aftermath of 9/11, Pakistan found itself in a bind created by their recognition and support of the Taliban regime in Kabul and by U.S. decisions to eliminate the threat posed by Al Qaeda and those who harbored them. They were constantly seeking a balance between maintaining traditional goals and allies and countering pressures from the U.S. to act against those allies. They also sought to avoid taking actions that would elicit a backlash from extremist groups operating inside Pakistan and in the border region. Pakistani leaders were distrustful of the U.S., recalling earlier disruptions to our relations, and at the same time, saw an opportunity to secure financial and military support in their efforts to address their budget shortfalls, encourage development, and to secure financial and military support to enhance their military capabilities. Tensions were exacerbated by public comments from U.S. officers in Kabul, deploring Pakistan's lack of success in ending cross-border activities, and by their perceptions that the U.S.-supported Karzai government was friendly to India. Musharraf and his senior military advisors were very cognizant of the importance of defending their views and policies to senior American officials. They were very willing to meet with all Bush administration's senior officials, Central Command leaders, and congressional delegations who came to Pakistan. It was a great honor to lead Team Pakistan at this critical time. I want to thank the Commission for its work and the opportunity to speak with you this morning.
Thank you all for your testimony. I also want to just recognize that the positions you held and the time that you served were in great service to our country, and all of us on the Commission deeply appreciate that and recognize that. We will now begin the question-and-answer portion of Panel One, and I will yield myself five minutes. I'd like to start the conversation with a question directed at Colonel Harriman. I deeply appreciate your attention to the interagency dynamics in your testimony and the conversation about what it takes to go to war if you want to use all of the resources available to you, and in those moments of the unknown, how you make use of what is available, and then how you make use of what comes your way in the moment. And I think you characterize that quite well. And in your position, you held a couple of different positions at the White House for several years during a period of the war that was post-invasion, and the Taliban had fallen, and the U.S. had continued its presence in Afghanistan. And outside observers have said that there was no plan for this time period. A lot of the conversations we've been having have alluded to that. So you were part of this inner circle when the U.S. was building this Afghanistan policy from the ground up. Can you explain to us, set the scene for us, about what the Bush administration thought was actually possible and achievable in Afghanistan, and how much of that was grounded in the political reality of Afghanistan, or how much of that had to do with the post-9/11 urgency?
So you're starting off with the easy questions. So you're starting off with the easy questions. Well, ma'am, I would point to a couple of things. First off, if you want to know our policy before 2002, look at the Afghanistan Freedom Support Act. It was passed in December. Somebody wrote it here. Somebody provided some input to it here, and also at the National Security Council and elsewhere. Probably the key line in that document is that we recommend that an AIOG be established at state, to coordinate at state. The NSC did not organize to go to war until I arrived, and then they really organized in 2005 by making the office for Iraq and Afghanistan. So when you go to war, it's useful to organize for combat. That's the army, the army term. We didn't, at least not initially. So it begs the question, why not? Another thing that I think we thought was that we could get in and get out. I went to brief Secretary Rumsfeld before I went to the NSC, and the briefing was, "We're going to need to maintain five divisions in Iraq for the foreseeable future." Before then, the plan is, is we're going to win, put in our five divisions, and come back. So one of the things, a tenet of military operations, is you plan for future operations. And I think that goes for national policy, too. We should have. I don't think we did. In terms of what we decided to do, sometime at the Pentagon, I started hearing the name of Maren Stramecki, and I asked my staff, "Who is he?" And they came back accurately, "He was some guy." And he was. And he wrote the plan that we implemented. I'll stop there, ma'am.
Could you, I wanted to go back to your comment about organizing to go to war. Presumably, from 2001 to 2003, we were doing, we were in wartime, and we were doing things from different vantage points. For example, the intel community was working on the ground, CENTCOM was preparing plans. What do you mean that we were not organized to go to war? Who are you talking about? Which institutions? And what was missing?
I think CENTCOM organized for the war. He did. But the NSC has a number of departments, both functional and regional. And so we were fighting out of functional departments. The Defense Office, for example. They were fighting both wars and coordinating both wars. And I'm not sure that the NSC decided to take a look at its capabilities and organize itself to fight the war from one office.
Okay. Would you characterize that, the coordination in the early years of the war, say, the first three years, as more ad hoc from the White House? And it was more, there was more delegation to the different parts of the executive branch that had ownership of aspects of the war?
I think we organized in 2003, and from then, we were organized within the NSC.
Okay.
But it was before then that I'm not sure we were.
Okay. Thank you. One more question, then I will yield to my co-chair. Another prominent feature of this time period is the discussion of what kind of footprint should the United States have? And we know that the push for a light footprint was a very prominent feature of the discussion. Could you give us some insight into those debates at the White House from your time period on why a light footprint, why not a white, why not a light footprint? And who were the, what were the different institutional perspectives on that footprint conversation?
While I was at the Pentagon, I spent quite a bit of time before coming to the NSC deploying troops. Not me, the secretary. I was preparing the orders that he signed. So we were preparing to go to war with Iraq for a long time. We were fighting in Iraq. And so I think in terms of force levels, the pressure of fighting in Iraq affected what we did in Afghanistan. And we didn't start asking independently for additional forces in Afghanistan until late 2005, 2000, 2006.
On the Iraq comparison, again, it's something that we are dealing with as a Commission, and it comes up quite a bit. Here, again, I would ask if you could be more specific in terms of what attention or resources were taken away from Afghanistan that had to go to Iraq? I think it's clear on the troops. I think it's clear on the planning perspective from, say, CENTCOM. Tell us about White House and NSC attention between Afghanistan and Iraq during this, again, this time period that you were working on it.
And I can only comment to a limited degree. The tension between Iraq and Afghanistan, that came to light after we published the assessment that we published, the Strategic Review. Before then, we didn't discuss, at least in deputies committee, force levels in Afghanistan. I was aware that we had limited force levels, and I used to say that the State Department had more combat aircraft in Colombia than Defense had in Afghanistan. I looked up the numbers once, but I'm not sure I could reproduce that analysis. So we took force levels as a given. CENTCOM asked for forces. Defense provided the forces. They've got a process for that. And we did not try to direct forces, at least from our office at the NSC.
Was that strategic assessment directed by the White House and organized by the White House?
No. John Gastroit and I thought it might be a good idea. He'll claim it was my idea. I claim it's his.
And John Gastroit, who was at the State Department at that time?
Yes, ma'am. He was my co-chair at the Afghanistan Interagency Operations Group.
Thank you. For the record, I believe he was Deputy Assistant Secretary, thank you, South Asia. Okay, I yield my time. I will turn it over to my co-chair.
Thank you to all the witnesses. Your testimony has definitely set us on a path, a greater understanding of this period. I had sort of two questions, both simple and probably both difficult for Ambassador Crompton, and they form bookends, I think, of this period. The first question is, you describe the pre-9/11 response as tepid, that there were warnings and indications, there were plans from particularly the agency side that could have addressed aspects of the Al Qaeda threat, but our response was sort of insufficient. So the question is, why was it insufficient? Why was it tepid in your estimation? The second question, which follows the fall of Kabul after this very, very successful campaign that you helped put together, the question is, if we failed to secure the peace, what would securing the peace have required in your estimation in the immediate aftermath of this catastrophic success in overthrowing the Taliban and driving Al Qaeda out?
The first question, I think it had three parts. One is that, and the most obvious, is that the enemy conducted, in my perspective, from my perspective, clear acts of war. They blew up our embassies in Kenya and Tanzania, killed Americans, killed our foreign allies. Then, and the next big one, of course, was the Millennium Threat, where with help from scores of countries' allied services and law enforcement, we, the CIA, were able to stop multiple attacks. It was a massive intelligence operation involving the CIA and literally scores of foreign services. This was all reported to policymakers, of course. And you may recall that one Al Qaeda operative was apprehended at the port Angeles in the state of Washington, crossing from Canada to the U.S. with the clear intention to attack Los Angeles Airport. And then the third was USS Cole. I had the privilege of leading the CIA response team to Yemen after that attack. And I remember standing in the bowels of that ship, where 19 sailors had died, looking at that huge ragged hole, only six inches above the waterline, and thinking, okay, now we will certainly go to war. We did not. The second piece of this is the intelligence. It was compelling. It was consistent, perhaps culminating in a 10-July meeting between Director Tenet Coford Black with National Security Advisor Rice, Steve Hadley, Richard Clark, outlining the growing drumbeat of threats and suggesting to the policymakers that the U.S. needs to go on a war footing. This is July 2001. Then again, August, you had a very compelling intelligence report that was disseminated to the President. So the intelligence, I think, was there, tragically of shortfall, of failure to predict exactly when and where 9/11 would happen. And I think the third piece of this is a failure to appreciate the intent and capabilities of the enemy because we underestimated them, and that, I think, in large part was because of our arrogance. We just couldn't comprehend that a non-state actor on the other side of the world, in one of the poorest countries of the world, could inflict such damage in spite of these acts of war and the compelling intelligence. I'm still perplexed to some degree how we could have ignored all that. You mentioned the covert action piece. From my perspective, it was limited. We at the agency were constrained. If you read this directive from the President, it basically said we could seek to capture bin Laden in Afghanistan, but we could not kill him unless there was no choice. In other words, it was a capture operation, and if we killed him in the process of that, that would be okay, maybe, depending on which lawyer you talk to. Equally important was the lack of resources. We had to send teams in Afghanistan, starting in September 1999, on Afghanistan helicopters. Our Afghan allies supplied the helicopter. They flew it. We didn't even have our own bird. Nevertheless, we were able to develop the partnerships and collect intelligence that we thought was a compelling yet insufficient response. And when I describe our response as tepid, I'm being polite. Your second question, why we failed to win the peace? I went to Afghanistan in late '05 or '06 when I was working for Secretary of State Rice in a different capacity, and this was just when the insurgency was growing. And I came away with three impressions, all of them negative. First was our lack of humility and understanding that this was an Afghanistan problem also. This was underscored when I was given a briefing by NATO in Afghanistan about the insurgency, about what the U.S., NATO allies, we were doing. There was no Afghan present at that briefing for me. I walked out of the briefing thinking, this probably will not end well if we don't have that type of partnership as we did in '01, '02. The second thing I noted was a growing bureaucracy and the conflicting agendas. It was turning into a diffusion of responsibility, and therefore, no one was responsible. The other impression I had was the amount of money pouring in and the potential for Sadly, that proves very true. The endemic systemic corruption grew at rapid speed, and I'm sure you've read the Inspector General's report, the Cigar Report, 164 pages. It is incredibly damning, where tens of billions of dollars from the U.S. government basically siphoned off. And it's not just about the money. It's about creating dependency. And when you create dependency, you take away the dignity of the people. And when you strip away the respect and the dignity and honor, and if I'm an insurgent, a Taliban insurgent sitting next door in Pakistan, and I see this, that's the perfect invitation to come in.
Thank you, Ambassador. Commissioner Allen, you are recognized. You have five minutes.
Thanks so much, everybody, for your testimony. Colonel Harriman, I'm interested in the timeline that you laid out, and I want to get to Iraq in just a second. But you seem to say that we were in a mode of get in, get out, and that by the time of the passage of the Afghanistan Support Act in December of 2002, we had more or less shifted to a nation-building strategy. Do I have that timeline right?
Yes.
And so what happened? When was a, was there a moment in particular when it shifted from get in, get out, to, you know what, we really need to? I know you mentioned the Maren Stramecki memo, but was there a particular moment that punctuated this period of time when we shifted to all of the elements of the Reconstruction, democratic and market-based economy, agricultural assistance, and all the other elements of nation-building in that particular law?
I don't have a clue. I know what our behaviors were from the defense side, but the idea that nation-building was the way forward, I'm not sure who decided that. I just don't know.
The narrative, of course, has been out there for years, that Secretary Rumsfeld was one of the prime proponents of a get in, get out strategy. That was, was that your sense of how it worked, or?
I believe that's correct, just again, based upon forces, decisions that he made, mostly for Iraq.
And you mentioned Stramecki comes back from Afghanistan with a huge to-do list, and Steve Hadley takes it over, and twice-weekly deputy committee meetings. That was in 2002, you think?
No, that was between September 2003 and probably March 2004.
So certainly by that time, we were fully immersed in more of a nation-building type of exercise.
And I think we were there before that because the Afghanistan Freedom Support Act had been passed, and we already had people in country doing things.
And when you mentioned your own Strategic Review with John Gastroit, what year was that? That was later, right?
Yes, that was 2006. It went to the President in November.
So the narrative, of course, has been out there for years, and it sounds plausible that when the attention of the Bush administration moved to Iraq, some of the focus on Afghanistan went away. That seems obvious, right? That is true?
Yes.
So Shamila began to get into this, but I wonder, how did it manifest itself? Sometimes, you know, policy time with the President, the attention of the National Security Council, budget, just mind share? Like, how do you, how do we measure? Or did we think everything was going great in Afghanistan for a period of time, and we had the bandwidth to shift? How can you help me think through this?
I don't think we felt that everything was going great because people had the impression that nothing was being done. So I think the NSC felt that nothing was happening in Afghanistan and that it needed to. And you look at where people spent their time, the Deputy National Security Advisor concentrated on Afghanistan. He did lots more than that, for sure. But he was the one who did that because I think the other theater was more important.
So he didn't cease doing the deputies committee meetings on the Afghanistan?
He was there at every one. He chaired them.
But he continued them through the march to war in Iraq, or?
Oh, absolutely. He was instrumental in all of my meetings and was the primary leader at the NSC throughout the time before he became the NSA himself.
Did we have a view, or do you recall having a view in that particular time period as we were talking about the ramp up to the war in Iraq of where the Taliban were in their insurgency, if you will? Were they still sort of in a retreat posture, or were they coming back at us at that period of time?
My sense was it was, they were not, they were not active for a period of time, as Ambassador Crompton said.
Yeah. Did you and others who work on Afghanistan and-- Did you and others who work on Afghanistan and, you know, self, did you self-censor your requests because you knew that all the attention was shifting toward Iraq and the possibility of their weapons of mass destruction program? I remember, I was there too. I remember it was the enormous elephant in the room. I'm just trying to think through how it might have affected your day-to-day operations.
I think forces' requests come from combatant commanders. And there was a combatant commander who was dealing with two wars, and I can't jump into his mind. I did at one point say, I can't remember to who, that it might be cool if we assigned Afghanistan and Iraq to two different combatant commanders. That way, we would get forces' requests that matched maybe what needed to be done. And he told me that was the stupidest idea he ever heard.
Yeah.
That's why I don't want to say who it was.
Okay, I'm out of time. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Our third panel today will actually get into the ground perspective of what was happening on the other end as they were receiving these NSC directives and the results of the meeting. So we will be able to balance out some of these conversations throughout the course of the day. So thank you for that. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Ashley. You have five minutes.
Thank you. First, let me say thanks to the witnesses for your willingness to testify today and for your contributions at the beginning of the conflict in Afghanistan. My question's for Ambassador Powell. So everyone in here has had the, has heard in the past, you know, your perspective on the problem you have to solve, the challenge you have, proximity to that problem gives you a different perspective from that inside Washington, inside the Beltway. When you went in, you, and you mentioned this in your opening statement, you had a very clear charter. Work with the Pakistanis on the global war on terrorism. Work with the Pakistanis on making sure that the relationship between Pakistan and India didn't move to conflict, and ensure that the Pakistanis were supportive of our efforts in Afghanistan. So from your position as you went in, did you feel that you had the ability to influence decisions in Washington? And were there any red flags or things that came up that you thought were incongruent with what needed to be accomplished in the region because of what you were hearing and decisions being made in D.C.?
I had really good support from Washington, particularly, I used to say my desk officers were named Powell and Armitage, which is not in any way to dishonor them. It's a, it's a way to say thank you to them for the interest that they showed in Pakistan and their effort to work particularly the interagency and to get the support that we needed. They were very clear, and when I arrived, there were assessments floating in the intelligence community that war was imminent and it might go nuclear between India and Pakistan. They almost went to war over a camel that got loose. So that was very, very much in my thoughts. I had also served in India, and I think we spent more time on that than Washington did, to be honest, of trying to support the efforts, the Track Two efforts, Musharraf's efforts with his National Security Advisor. But we had enormous support for also limiting the numbers. I was given a ceiling of the number of people I could have at post. The agencies within my country team could negotiate that number, but we kept it very, very small for security reasons. That obviously went by the wayside after a number of years, and the embassy expanded greatly. But it was a very tight ship, and I reported every Friday on how many people I had at, in the consulates and the embassy. So it was, it was a very important piece of managing the interagency and trying to make sure that we were dealing with the efforts. The cooperation on the global war on terror was led by the Chiefs of Station, by frequent visitors from Washington, and was, I think, the fact that the Pakistanis arrested Khalid Sheikh Mohammed says something about our, we were there, but we were not doing the arrest. We were not in the, in the facility where he was sleeping. It says something about our cooperation and the level of trust that we had at that time that did not always continue in the future. But it was, again, supported very much by Washington.
So you highlighted a couple of key action officers you had in D.C., Powell and Armitage. We often talk about a whole-of-government approach and, you know, how well are we aligned? Now, you speak to pretty good alignment from the interagency. Can you just give us some examples of what worked well during your tenure from an interagency alignment and how that aligned well with what was happening in D.C. and what you had to do in Pakistan?
I don't want to say that we had, you know, la-la land in Islamabad because we obviously had tensions, particularly between the intelligence and the law enforcement sections, different ideas on how to approach the reintroduction of military assistance and what it would consist of, even within the Department of Defense on that one. But I would stress the importance of Chief of Mission Authority to manage some of those at the local level and the support of Washington in the interagency. FBI Director Mueller was extraordinarily helpful to me at times as I tried to manage, particularly the walk-in program. Pakistanis were frequent walk-ins with information that frequently was an effort to undermine one of their relatives or an enemy rather than to help us. And trying to sort that out and which agency was going to sort it out became a degree of tension within the mission, but that was resolved with help from Washington and different personnel being assigned to Islamabad. The military assistance program had to restart. We'd had a very robust military assistance program when I had been in Pakistan before. And particularly important were the fact that we sent officers to training at Fort Leavenworth and the military schools. And those people were in command in the number of the important areas that, and we had a defense attache who put his uniform back on after retiring, who had been in Pakistan, who'd been a member of the, of their war college and knew these generals and retired generals, and was an important link to trying to deal with the Pakistani military and to engage, try to figure out what they were up to, particularly in the border area.
Thanks, Ambassador. I yield back.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Bash. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair, and thanks to fellow commissioners and staff, and thank you to the witnesses. Ambassador Crumpton, in your testimony, you said, "We developed a clear picture of victory in Afghanistan," referring to the efforts of CIA and your partners. Can you just say a little bit more about what that clear picture looked like from the perspective of the force that came in in the fall of 2001 and the forces that stayed on to work with the Afghan partners and military partners over the ensuing months?
Based on the intelligence and the relationships, we knew who our Afghan partners were and their prospective partners could be. So we were not only collecting intelligence over the previous two years about the enemy, but also about the human terrain. And based on that and based on ongoing discussions in September into October, we determined where to drop our teams. And we went from the first team, Jawbreaker, to the second team, Alpha, all the way to Juliet, and we dropped them throughout Afghanistan based on that intelligence and the trust that we had with Afghan partners. And so our strategy, that picture, was driven primarily by what our Afghan allies were saying and what they were demonstrating. And so you could think of our counterterrorism mission, and that's all we were focused on, was stopping Al Qaeda and trying to destroy Al Qaeda. Merging that with this insurgency that our Afghan allies had been waging. And we talk about a light footprint or a heavy footprint? Well, to go at that time, the only choice we had was a light footprint.
And can you comment on, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Because the Commander in Chief demanded that we go right away. That was his clear directive, and that's why the CIA dropped in 16 days after 9/11.
And can you comment on the battle at Tora Bora? We've heard assessments and accounts of, of course, Al Qaeda fleeing over the border. Would there have been an opportunity to seal the border? Would there have been an opportunity to prevent bin Laden from escaping and from, to prevent elements of Al Qaeda from fleeing to a safe haven in neighboring Pakistan?
President Bush asked me a similar question several days before Tora Bora, asked if we could seal the border, and I told him, no. There's no way you could seal the border. I had maps with me. I demonstrated the escape routes, but said you would need a massive army. Pakistan could try, but they wouldn't have a capability to absolutely seal it. Second part of your question, could we have captured or killed bin Laden there? Yes. We knew he was there. Head of Team Juliet called me. He was at Tora Bora. He called me at Langley Headquarters and urged that we send troops, that, given the terrain, given the environment, this handful of CIA and special forces officers just could not do the job. I conveyed this to Kofor Black, my boss, and to Director Tenet, and I called General Tommy Franks in Tampa and made that request.
And do you believe that the failure of the United States to send troops, U.S. military troops, to that area of Tora Bora where we had intelligence that bin Laden was, do you believe that failure deprived us, deprived us of the opportunity to decapitate Al Qaeda's leadership at that moment?
I think there's a good possibility we could have captured or killed bin Laden there. We knew he was there, and credit to the handful of officers on the ground, they called in airstrikes for 72 hours. We killed hundreds of Al Qaeda, but sadly, not bin Laden.
Thank you. I yield back.
Commissioner Crocker, you are recognized. You have five minutes.
Thank you, and thanks to our witnesses today for being here, and thank you especially for your extraordinary service on behalf of the nation. It is debatable whether America was ever really at war. You certainly were in the field and in Washington. Thank you for that. Ambassador Crumpton, we've just talked about Tora Bora. I'd like to shift to a somewhat later campaign, Operation Anaconda, beginning of March 2002. That was the first major operation in which a conventional force headquarters had overall command, 10th Mountain Division. Our ends can be found in our beginnings, and I would be very interested in your perspective on the planning and execution of Anaconda, and particularly the role of conventional forces and conventional headquarters, along with special operators, and, of course, the paramilitary.
President Bush asked me about the morale of the men downrange. This was just before Operation Anaconda. The next day, I showed him a picture of a group of men surrounded by buried relics of the World Trade Center with an American flag behind them. This group of men consisted of three elements of the CIA and three different elements of the military. My point to President Bush was, the cooperation, the coordination is so good, so tight, you can't tell who's who. In that picture, you could not. And I think that reflected the unity of mission on the ground. That team basically were the scouts that went forward into the high country scouting for the enemy and informing our military, you know, where and how to strike. It was brutal conditions. It was cold. We were fighting an implacable foe, particularly Chechen fighters who were part of that, and it was difficult, and we lost men. Roberts Ridge in particular was a tragedy. It also provided an opportunity for deploying tools and weapons that we had not. I'll give you one example. It was the first time that we'd used a predator drone, an armed predator drone, supporting troops on the ground on Roberts Ridge. So to answer your question, it was a success, but imperfect because we lost lives. And it was really the last major engagement with Al Qaeda until 2005, '06.
Thank you, and thank you for your mention, both in your oral and your written testimony, for the sacrifices our Afghan partners and allies made. They, they lost a lot of folks at Anaconda, and I had the opportunity to visit a number of their wounded in the hospital in Kabul. There were a lot of them. And throughout the 20 years of our engagement in Afghanistan, we sometimes do not pay, I think, adequate credit to the Afghans who, for 20 years, fought and died for their country. Ambassador Powell, you addressed this earlier to an extent. Part of your mission was to stabilize the embassy platform. An embassy, as is not too widely known in the United States, is not an enclave of the State Department. It encompasses all executive branch personnel, and in a complex place like Pakistan with an embassy and three constituent posts, that can involve a dozen or more agencies. Could you be a little more specific on the steps you took to stabilize that embassy platform?
A couple of things. When I arrived, there were only two people that had been there at the time of the bombing. I arrived in June, and the bombing had occurred in April. The turnover and the churn in the embassy for the two and a half years that I was there was quite incredible. I later on, as the Director of Personnel, was trying to manage the assignments of personnel to Afghanistan, Pakistan, and Iraq. I think this is one of the things that perhaps the Commission can look at, is how we staff our civilian agencies in these positions. They were on accompanied posts. We had small numbers of spouses that were working in specific jobs, but it was a very small number. It became increasingly more difficult to do that. I had the opportunity, after I came back from Pakistan, to participate in a panel with some bank officials and others that had been in New York after 9/11. And the presentations were incredibly common in terms of what actions we had taken. And the most important thing was trying to return things to a normal operating, maybe not the tempo because that never changed, but the rules and regulations. Just a couple of examples of things that I found when I got to post. The security, the general security regulations of leaving things out, you got a security violation, were not in place. Guns were allowed to be carried in both the mission, in all of the mission facilities by those who needed, thought they needed them. This included the restaurant and the bar. And we just started saying, wait a minute, we're, if you need, you put them in a safe in the embassy. If you need them outside, absolutely no problem, but we don't need them in the bar. And just trying to make things more normal, trying to make sure that people had celebrations. The Fourth of July occurred not too long after I got there. We had a grand celebration inside the consulate, inside the embassy. Doing those kinds of things of trying to make sure that people are rewarded for their service that's recognized. But it was a return to normalcy that helped us most. People were sleeping in the embassy when I arrived. They had not, they were temporary duty personnel and had not taken any quarters outside the embassy. Their garbage was all over on the hallway that led to the Ambassador's office. It was like, no, you can go find someplace else to sleep. We're not in a crisis right now. We may get there, but. We also had, the country team became very important. This is the heads of agencies and the heads of the State Department sections of coordinating. I had a meeting every day of small country team. I don't think I ever had the same number, the same individuals two weeks in a row. People would go on R and R. They would be sent off on missions. The other thing that I tried to do when I got there was, I did not have a lot of personnel who had South Asia experience. I did not know Afghanistan very well. I was the person in the 1980s in the embassy who had nothing to do with Afghanistan. I took members of my country team to Kabul, and I took them to Delhi. I wish we had done more of that. I think that would have been important. When I was in India as ambassador, I actually was able to arrange for briefings by people from Washington and from Kabul on what was happening in Afghanistan. I should have done that for Pakistan. It is a practice I would recommend to the, to the military commanders and to the ambassador in a similar situation. I think that's very important, but the Chief of Mission Authority is incredibly important and needs to be safeguarded to allow you to manage the interag- and needs to be safeguarded to allow you to manage the interagency process. But I had very, very good support, and as mentioned, not only did Secretary Powell and Secretary Army, Deputy Secretary Armitage come often, they were incredibly important in working with President Muammar Ghazali, and they used their military status. Deputy Secretary Armitage was a graduate of the Naval Academy. General Powell, obviously, was well-known to General Muammar Ghazali. And they conducted a lot of their business on a code of honor that involved their uniforms. That gave them an advantage that I didn't have in dealing with President Muammar Ghazali, but it was an incredibly important addition to the dialogue, that they could make that appeal to him. But Director Tenet was a frequent visitor. As I said, FBI Director Mueller was out often. We had a number of the executive agency heads, cabinet members come, and that was helpful. It's also very strenuous when you're running both a bed and breakfast and a mission. But we had incredible security concerns that had to be addressed, and this is one of the pieces. When I arrived, we had three people in the security section who had been assigned there. We had four that were on temporary duty for 30 days. By the time they got over jet lag, most of them were sick at least once. It was time for them to go home. And so getting that mix, particularly where there's a terrorism threat and you need the security, is also incredibly important.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Feda. You have five minutes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Lady. Saying thank you to all the witnesses for your honest remarks today. I want to thank you all for the roles you played in the aftermath of 9/11 in keeping us safe. Clearly, there was sacrifice that you all put towards that, and again, on behalf of myself and fellow commissioners, thank you. I also want to thank the Commission's staff for all the hard work that they've been doing to not only prepare this, but we're at just about the halfway point of this commission. There's a lot of hard work that they will continue to do, and again, just wanted to echo the co-chairs' comments, that this has been something historic that'll provide insights, answers, and hopefully, healing for many, not just in the United States, but around the world. My first question is for you, Colonel Harriman. The Bush administration set a trajectory for the US campaign in Afghanistan that later administrations inherited, adopted, and at times either struggled to modify or reverse. What advice would you give to future national security officials who find themselves facing a similar set of trade-offs between short-term stability and long-term credibility?
I think the key thing to do is, when you act, think about the aftermath of the act and have some idea of how you want to leave it. The other thing is, is understand from the beginning that it's going to take more than you think it will. I think those two things are the key things.
None of us have a crystal ball, at least I haven't found anybody with one, but we often, throughout this testimony and throughout the work of the Commission, as our co-chairs have said, have had to wrestle with the twin wars of Iraq and Afghanistan. Again, not knowing you don't have a crystal ball. How do you think the campaign in Afghanistan could have gone differently if we, had we not engaged in the Iraq campaign? And again, I look at it more from a resource and focus perspective.
Well, if we decided to do some nation building, and we did, we didn't have, we had lots of support from other people and other nations, but it took some time to get them to commit to all the implications of nation building. We did have an option, I think, early on, which was not to attempt that, given what we were trying to do, and to try to do something else. And that involved the risk of ungoverned spaces or spaces that are governed by somebody other than us. And sometimes, that's a good risk to take.
Understood. Thank you. For the ambassadors, Crumpton and Powell, a question for you. So during the period that we're focusing on in this panel, for half of that period, I happened to be up here, like a couple of my other colleagues, up on the Hill, working both in the House and the Senate. Congress during that period clearly had a say about what was happening in Afghanistan. Curious for you to reflect on the times either Ambassador, or either Ambassador, when you came up to testify, or for you, Ambassador Powell, when members came through, what was on their mind when it came to Afghanistan? A lot of our Commission work is focusing on the executive branch and obviously the military side. There's an international component, but there's also a congressional component. So just curious, as we think about the decisions that were being made, what were those inputs or those thoughts that you were getting from members of Congress during that period?
I had a large number of congressional delegations. I don't believe I ever testified. I met with Senator Lugar and some others privately, but I don't believe I testified, other than my confirmation hearing, which came after I went to Pakistan. I actually went as chargee and then came back, which is a very unusual situation. But I would say that nearly all of the members of the Senate Armed Forces Committee came. Senator McCain came several times, a large number of representatives. They were concerned about Pakistan's role in the global war on terror, looking particularly for signs of cooperation, signs of problems, how they could help with that. They were interested in, some of them in the new relationship with Pakistan in terms of our military assistance and our aid program. Most of them, all of them, I would say, met with President Muammar Ghazali. He had an opportunity to explain Pakistan's concerns and to ask for additional assistance, which he always did. But the emphasis was on the global war on terror and Pakistan's role in it and how appreciation for the actions that they had taken, but the expectation that there would be additional ones.
Thank you. Ambassador Crumpton?
I don't recall a meeting with any members of Congress in 01/02. I was busy.
Okay. Thank you so much. I yield back my time.
Commissioner Hardig, you are recognized.
Echo my fellow commissioners in thanking our witnesses for being here today, for such candid comments, and also for your service to the nation. One of the primary lenses that we, as the Commission, are using to examine our efforts is some of the big decisions we made and the implications of those decisions, both in the near term and in the longer term. And one of the more important decisions that we made early on was to work with local Afghan partners, for reasons that Ambassador Crumpton and others have spoken to, as in necessity. But clearly, the partners we worked with and how we empowered them had implications both in the near term and longer term in the war. So Ambassador Crumpton is one of the key players who ran that strategy. I'd love to hear your views on, what do you think worked well and what didn't work as well in our work with local partners early in the war?
What worked well was the intelligence that they provided, the partnership that they provided, and the risk, including the risk that they took. When we dropped teams into Afghanistan, all of them, except the first one, Jawbreaker, which went into the Panchashur Valley, all the others were literally surrounded by the So it took a huge leap of faith on our part, but also on the part of the Afghans. And we need to understand that and recognize that. I think the other part that worked well, as we fought together, was the shared risk and responsibility. It was a partnership. Without each other, we would not have survived. And when I say "we," I'm also referring to our military colleagues who had fortunately quickly joined the CIA teams. The CIA teams could not have survived without the US military, and the CIA and US military would not have survived without our Afghan allies. It was that interdependent. And truly remarkable, in retrospect, was the ability of the CIA and special forces to come together in, like an epoxy, and they served to knit together Afghan tribal allies, tens of thousands, some of them on horseback, knit them together with US air power, and synchronize and coordinate those attacks across the country. It was a remarkable feat. The other part I think worked well was the network command structure that I established by having the team leaders, the CIA team leaders, communicate constantly with each other. And bearing in mind that these team leaders were the military equivalent of colonels or generals commanding small commando teams. They had enormous experience and authority and latitude that we encouraged. And I think that network leadership and communication, working with our allies, really contributed to the speed and precision and flexibility on the battlefield, to the point where I often did not know what our teams were doing. And this frankly was a little bit of a cultural discussion between the CIA and the military, because some of these plans were put together literally on the fly in the field. And CENTCOM had trouble understanding that we didn't really have a plan in CIA headquarters. The plans and executions at the team level were being made in the field. We resolved that over the weeks as they saw what we were doing, but I think that worked well. What didn't work well, I think, was the handoff, and particularly '02, '03, to the rest of the US government. And we talk about the counterinsurgency. Well, I don't have the answer, but the big question is failing to win the peace in '02 to '05. And that was not just a military piece, that was a US government piece. And we clearly dropped the ball in what should have been some type of handoff. And there are reasons for it. Iraq, there's the hubris that I mentioned earlier, this mirror image we have, but that was the major failure, I think.
Were there any concerns at the time that the partners that we empowered and the way we empowered them, that that would complicate future governance efforts, or was that not really a consideration then?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Was there any concern at the time that the partners that we worked with and our empowering of them would complicate future governance efforts, or was that not really a consideration at the time?
At the time, it was not a consideration because our mission was to destroy al Qaeda as fast and efficiently as we could.
Thank you. I yield my time.
Commissioner Jones, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. Want to thank the witnesses, both for their service to the nation and for their agreement to come here and testify. I also want to note the bipartisan nature of this commission, which I think has been critical in taking an objective look at the history of the US's time in Afghanistan, and continues to be an important part of that. I want to turn to the role of Pakistan, both to Ambassador Crumpton and to Ambassador Powell. Ambassador Crumpton, in your testimony, you talked about the challenge over time of denying safe haven in Pakistan. And Ambassador Powell, you talked through Pakistan's objectives, as you saw them, which included the avoidance of creating anti-government activity on both sides of the border by tribal organizations. You talked about their desire, in your view, to minimize Indian influence in Afghanistan, and then also Pakistan interest in having a pro-Pakistan regime in Kabul as well. My question is, starting with Ambassador Crumpton, from your perspective, both at CIA and at State, did the level of cooperation with Pakistan change over time? And if so, how? I mean, the government writ large in Pakistan, as well as ISI itself?
Certainly, 9/11 was the watershed. Before 9/11, Pakistan was very close to the Taliban. Immediately after 9/11, Richard Armitage met with the Pakistan Ambassador here, the head of Pakistani intelligence, and really gave them an ultimatum. They quickly began to cooperate. They, on our behalf, reached out to the Taliban with an offer that the Taliban, if they would step aside, we would be glad to take care of al Qaeda. The Taliban leader, Mullah Omar, with the encouragement of the Pakistanis, held a two-day conference among Taliban leaders, and they decided to reject that overture. Even with that, the CIA, a senior CIA officer in concert with the Pakistanis, met with Taliban envoys as far as, I think, into early October even, and again, made the same overture, working with the Pakistanis. If the Taliban could give us bin Laden, or if they could do justice as they saw fit, or just get out of our way, we did everything, I think, we could to focus on al Qaeda. But the Taliban made their choice, and they had to pay the price for that. The Pakistanis, later on, they were certainly incredibly helpful in the capture of key al Qaeda leaders. Later on, I grew less confident of the Pakistan's ability to do their job, ability or willingness to do their job. This was underscored, of course, by bin Laden finding safe haven in Pakistan for all those years.
Can you just clarify, Ambassador Crumpton, when you said "later on," were you referring to any series of years there?
Yeah, later on, in '05, '07, when I was working for Secretary of State Rice as a coordinator for counterterrorism, and I went to Pakistan, I went to Afghanistan, and I came back discouraged, given the level of Taliban and al Qaeda activity in the tribal areas.
Thank you. Ambassador Powell?
I'd just add a couple of things. I wanted to add and make sure that, I think I also mentioned that they were concerned about the threat to Pakistan and its officials. Muammar Ghazali, while I was there, was twice car bombed. He survived in both cases, but there were very definite threats. There were threats up in SWAT, even during the time I was there. They became bigger later, but I think perhaps we did not pay enough attention to the tribal relations that went across border that were more important than nationalism to the people on the border. I was there when the Pakistanis made their first major attempt to try to interdict people in the tribal areas. It was a total, complete fiasco. And it resulted in some planning for training programs, but it was never completely clear to me. It certainly was not what we anticipated. We had anticipated a much more organized effort, a combined military intelligence effort on the Pakistani part, and they lost 26 individuals in the attack. They did not capture anyone, and it was a real wake-up call to us that perhaps the capabilities were not as much as we thought they were, that they needed training. There was also a question of just how much will there was, and those questions persisted. But there were efforts in the tribal areas, but I would also, you know, recall that the tribal areas have been described by Churchill and others as completely ungovernable. It's not something new to that part of the world.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller, you are recognized.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here today. I'm also going to try to draw you out a little bit more on this question of failure to win the peace in this period of '02 to '05, because it's clear, at least in my view, that the emergence of the insurgency fundamentally changed the nature of the US mission in Afghanistan and changed the trajectory of the war. So what I'd like to ask is a two-part question to both Ambassador Crumpton and Ambassador Powell, that you might answer from different perspectives. And the first part of it is about the emergence of the insurgency and its growing strength. Did the US see it coming? If not, why not? In that early period that Ambassador Crumpton, you've described as the success, was there any perception of risk that the Taliban could regroup and that it was going to be necessary to prevent them from regrouping? And then during this period of '02 to '05, did we see that regrouping occurring? And was there anything we could have done more of, better, more successfully, to prevent the insurgency from... the insurgency from taking hold? That's the first part of the question. The second part of the question is, Ambassador Crumpton, you pointed to the failure to deny safe haven in Pakistan as a key factor in failing to win the peace. For 20 years, 20-plus years, your contemporaries and your contemporaries' successors had as an objective, trying to crack the code of getting Pakistan to change its own perceptions of its own interests in Afghanistan, and to do more to deny safe haven and contribute to the U.S. war effort. And the U.S. attempted to do that at risks and costs that were tolerable to the U.S. in light of what it would mean to be taking an adversarial posture towards Pakistan, and also the, the reliance that the U.S. had on Pakistan for fighting the war in neighboring Afghanistan, given the need for access. So, you know, I'd like to hear a little more about what you think denying safe haven could have looked like, that it didn't look like, that was realistically feasible for the United States. And, you know, was there a way to crack that code over the course of 20 years, given that that was a clear policy priority of the United States during your periods of service and later? Thank you.
I'll take the first part of that, and I'll defer to Ambassador Powell on the, the other piece. The three strategic objectives that I outlined in the fall of 2001. Number one, we had to nullify enemy leadership, had to kill them or capture them or undermine their legitimacy in some way. The second is deny safe haven. And the third is you've got to address the conditions, often very local, that the enemy exploits. You have to do all three. If you don't do all three, you will not win. The safe haven piece, particularly acute, given the terrain next door in Pakistan and given the history of the Pakistanis' relationship, particular ISI, with the Taliban and Al Qaeda. So yes, I was acutely aware of that issue, and I even advocated without success for hot pursuit across the border from Afghanistan into Pakistan. That argument didn't go very far, just given the understandable sensitivities of Pakistani sovereignty. I made the point, however, that the federally administrative tribal area, the FATAH, if, if the Pakistanis could not exert sovereign control over that, they should allow hot pursuit, our hot pursuit of the enemy. But we didn't do that. So yes, I was acutely aware of, I think, the danger if we did not address that. Now, from 02 to 05, I was no longer in the fight. I had stepped aside after four years of counterterrorism work. So I will defer to Ambassador Powell on what we could have done, you know, during that, that window of opportunity.
Just a, a couple of things. I will repeat my and Hank's comments about just the difficulty of the border situation. It would require an enormous effort to try to seal that border and an incredible amount of cooperation and knowledge of those diverse groups. I think a couple of things. I spent Christmas Eve, I think in 2003, dealing with a desire to come across the border on Christmas Eve and opposing it in terms of what it would do to our relationship with Pakistan. We were doing other things, particularly on the global war on terror, and I thought they would be undermined by an attack. And it was eventually called off, but I think I was up till 2:30 that morning, trying to get it turned off with help from Washington. The other thing to keep in mind is that some of this was fueled by the perception in Pakistan that the Kabul regime was turning pro-Indian, that there was greater influence by India. I don't know that we recognized as much as that as we could and perhaps could have moderated it, explained it better to the people in Pakistan. But this became a theme as I went through my tenure, much more concerned about Karzai's relationship with Delhi. He had gone to school in Delhi, those kinds of things. The Indians put up a number of listening posts that had nothing to do with Afghanistan and everything to do with Pakistan. It's another part of the puzzle of why they were resisting some of these actions in the tribal areas. It was obviously not an issue when I first got there, become, became much more of an issue, I think, the longer we were in Afghanistan and working that particular piece, and the pressures were on the Taliban, on the Al Qaeda people coming into Pakistan.
Thank you. Commissioner Mukapadhyay, you are recognized.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. The attacks on the American homeland on 9/11 bound the United States and Afghanistan to one another in unprecedented terms. And in those early months and years, there were so many crucial decisions that were made that set the terms of engagement for the relationship between our two countries. I'm very grateful to our witnesses for your service and also for your willingness to help us make sense of these seminal choices and the context within which they were made. For me, the big question that looms above the rest is how we understand the, the logic of building a state in Afghanistan in the service of restoring American security here at home. What did it mean to do state building in the service of a war on terror? And how would American national security interests shape and constrain Afghan efforts at establishing sovereignty and self-determination? So in the spirit of that big question, I want to ask Ambassador Crumpton a more, a more specific one. The Taliban regime was toppled quickly on account of the extraordinary campaign that you've recounted for us. And in the winter of 2000-